I don't know, maybe the activities that we are all leaving.
Yeah, so, uh, I talked to Ron, I told him I was gonna be at the, uh, meeting. Oh, good.
Yeah, yeah, I just got it because a lot of times, I didn't hear about something, I know it all the way past, because I haven't looked at it in a while enough, or I never got it to do it.
I sent you notes to me. Which one should I use?
The only big idea that's here, and we're gonna have to have.
You, sir? Yeah, you're doing right? Yeah, for this, you got, are we doing, I don't know, most people are doing.
Because everybody knows that.
That's good. Yeah, we're, we're here. Social distancing, right?
I was really excited to be such a little model.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta, oh, I have to, you have to, yourself.
On seven?
We have on the C.
I don't know, Martin.
That's right. That's right.
Hey, how are ya?
I, so far, so good. How about everybody else? Absolutely, that's what it's here for. But I passed it, I know, there you go, spread it around, spread it around, massage it in, there you go.
Sleep behind you there.
She's trying to get through there, but, well, we're having a misty nipper, we're having a gel, we're having a, we're having a, Nancy, that type of incident, so.
We're throwing the stuff around.
Did what explode?
Get coffee, get them thrown out.
I'm just kidding, if you can.
So, um, just really quickly, I guess, is this your gift?
Oh, yes, I have one at home.
Oh, okay, you did, I'm gonna give it to Jay.
I'm gonna give him all, I'll give him.
Oh, and you know, I have, you give it to me, too, I have a whole. Yeah, you, you volunteer, is that right?
Well, I just think that there's, uh, this, uh, contract.
David.
So, do I have to?
Nope.
They're all consent. I just think that's.
Oh, you do this in Washington, do you?
Yeah.
And then?
That's the way it works.
Are you, you wanna go down, if they're here? I don't know.
Yeah, I'll go down and.
And that is, I was going there.
Do we have a copy?
Um, well, I think so.
Do I have a copy?
The jury.
I, I, uh, but I can read it in the engine. I don't see it here, though, guess.
Okay. Nothing, uh, go. Mail, go.
Is that what this is called? Do you wanna read?
Because the guy's so.
Oh, oh, okay.
I, I do read these very seldom.
Okay, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started, so, um, welcome, stay away from one another, uh, there's plenty of hand sanitizers somewhere in the building, so, how about everybody join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Irene, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, of course, Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Here.
And Mayor Walter?
Here. Conflict of interest, anybody to claim a conflict of interest?
Seven, eight, and ten.
Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Me, um, six, because I live right next door to the Cherry Creek Affordable Housing, that's in the consent calendar?
Yes.
Um, and as, hmm, I think that's it.
Okay. Well, if I'm not mistaken, Jose, they can stay on the dais, um, as long as they're not pulled for discussion.
That, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Next is, uh, agenda review, any changes to the agenda?
Mayor's staff doesn't have any changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Next is public comment, anyone wishing to address the city council on items that do not appear on tonight's agenda may do so, just step right up to the podium and, uh, sign your name and share with us what you have to say.
Hi, everybody, uh, most of you know, there's not a lot of people here, so I don't have to do a background story on what happened with the Six Acres Water Company, uh, my name is Sage Smith Taylor, by the way, um, we recently received, I'm just doing a quick update, we recently received back the pre-annexation agreement with some edits that include, um, that, you know, the city can do what, that this is the agreements that we came to in the room, but the city can do whatever they want later, so, it's not something that I can, I could, um, that I find tenable, so, I actually told the state about an hour and a half ago that it looks like the only path forward with the consolidation is probably gonna do a, a forced consolidation, I just wanted you guys to know at the same time, because this is our community together, and it's our problem together, we can't drill a new well because the sewer ponds were installed next to our well after our well was there, we can't get water deep enough, I mean, this is a collective issue, but, I feel like the only person that is negotiating in good faith is me, sadly, and I don't know how to get what we agreed to in a room and shake hands when we were allowed to, onto a piece of paper, and with that being said, I just wanted to let you guys know that probably, um, you know, it's not gonna be on our terms anymore, and I'm sorry about that, I failed. Good luck.
If you could just state your name for the record into the mic and?
I did, but Sage Smith Taylor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, good luck, you guys.
David, do we know about that, or?
Uh, I know this has been an ongoing, uh, process, review of the, uh, pre, a pre-annexation agreement, uh, between, uh, the Six Acres, the attorney that's been representing the Six Acres and, uh, all, and, and the city attorney's office, uh, and there's been considerable language, uh, changes and modifications, uh, it might be something that you want to, uh, bring up at, uh, I thi, I think, you know, some of the terms really, uh, relate to, uh, financial matters, so, it may be something, I know it's been talked about quite a bit at the planning, uh, subcommittee, but you may wanna, you may wanna discuss it at the finance, admin, and police subcommittee, so you can actually talk about the, uh, some of the financial aspects of the, uh, the draft pre-annexation agreement.
I'd like, I'd like to do that, and if the city attorney's office could, uh, maybe provide us with a confidential memo on exactly where we are with that situation.
Can I just quickly address that, I actually have, from the state, and some of you were in the room, uh, we have, uh, pretty much, they've told us that there's a hundred percent funding available, this is literally get hung, getting hung up over a bridge.
Over what?
A bridge.
A br, yeah.
A bridge, and, and Cloverdale's desire to control that tiny little lane and make changes whenever they want, um, without any, um, even any reason, it literally says Cloverdale can do whatever they want, whenever they want, with no input from the community, and it's at the, the, the financial responsibility of the residents there, it's absolutely unreasonable. So, I don't know if it's coming back from the lawyer, and you guys aren't reading it, but I don't know how to get from here to there, and I've already come so far over, and my community's gone so far over, we have the county, we have the state, we have everybody on board, I cannot believe we couldn't get this done, but we couldn't get it done, so.
Give us a little bit to take a look at that, okay?
All right, thanks, guys.
Move back your page, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the, um, city council on items not on the agenda, just come up to the, to the podium, please, and state your name, sign that little sheet, and, uh, tell us what you have to say.
Hello, my name's Madeline Wallace, I'm a county resident of Cloverdale. My concern is the sale of fireworks that the city of Cloverdale allows, and I believe there's four cities that do that in the county of Sonoma, Cloverdale, Petaluma, Roanoke Park, and Sebastopol, I believe that, um, Cloverdale is the only one of those four that Cal Fire has designated a high fire risk area, and, um, I think that fireworks should only be, should be the city sanctioned fireworks show, um, and not people just being able to set off fireworks in their area with the fire department present at the city show, uh, I think that the, um, nonprofit groups need to find an alternative fundraiser, um, let's see, what else, I think that the fireworks sale actually, if something happens in our county, in, in the county area of Cloverdale, and I'm not sure what they do to check, who's buying these things, um, the city will be liable, um, we have been evacuated three times, and it's an issue.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, my name's Janice Brewer, I'm also a, um, resident of the county here in Cloverdale, and I would like to, um, endorse everything that Madeline said, um, those of us who live outside of the city are very vulnerable, um, and it is frightening, every Fourth of July, to see what goes on in the city, either in town or on the roads outside of town, and I think it's time that the city council do something about this.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the city council on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section, and we'll bring it back for, uh, proclamations and presentations, and the first is proclaiming the week of March the fifteenth through March the twenty-first as National Surveyors Week, and Mark, is that your item?
Yeah. That's great, uh, we're gonna have a.
Our student intern? Read it for us. Okay.
Okay, so, whereas surveying has been an essential element in the development of the human environment since the beginning of recorded history, and it is a requirement in the planning and execution of nearly every form of construction, with its most familiar modern uses in the fields of transport, building, and construction, communications, mapping, and the definition of legal bound, boundaries for land ownership, and, whereas, in order to accomplish their objectives, surveyors use elements of engineering, physics, mathematics, astronomy, law, and history, and whereas, since the colonial days of the United States of America, surveyors have been leaders in the community, statesmen, influential citizens, and shapers of cultural standards, and former notable surveyors include George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, Abraham Lincoln, Lewis and Clark, Daniel Boone, and Henry David Thoreau, among many others, and whereas, surveying has expanded today to include engineering surveys for in, infrastructure design, hydrographic surveys, geodetic surveys, to determine precise global positioning, and cartographic surveys for mapping, and whereas, many services are now provided through the use of sophisticated surveying equipment and technologies, including satellite-born remote sensing devices, and automated position, positioning, measuring, recording, and plotting equipment, and whereas, the establishment of the week of March fifteenth through the twenty-first, 2020, as National Surveyors Week, is a fitting tribute to all surveyors, now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the city council of the city of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim the week of March fifteenth through March twenty-first, 2020, as National Surveyors Week in the city of Cloverdale.
Thank you, Emma, uh, is there anyone in the audience, uh, here representing the surveyors? Okay, well, we're gonna make sure that they, they get that, and Emma, that's why, if you ever become mayor of the city of Cloverdale, you hand it, the proclamations to the city manager to read, and you go down for the photo op, okay? So, thank, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation by Zero Waste Sonoma, and, um, David, is this your item?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, the, the item tonight, um, before you is a presentation by the executive director of, uh, Zero Waste Sonoma, uh, she's gonna provide, uh, a presentation on the California Redemption Value Pilot Partnership Program and Grant, uh, by way of background, Leslie Lukash, who is the executive director, uh, for Zero Waste, has been, uh, provided direction by the board to explore this program, uh, th, this program, um, is something that was, uh, generated in response to the loss of community recycling centers, uh, back, it really started around tw- two thousand fourteen, twenty fifteen, uh, i, is partly because of the economics around recycling, the, the primary, uh, business provider for these, uh, types of facilities was no longer able to operate economically, and so, they no longer, uh, provided the service in, in many of our communities in, in Sonoma County, uh, a, and as a result, the, uh, state adopted, uh, SB four fifty-eight, which, uh, allows, uh, Cal Recycle to approve these pilot programs, and, uh, Leslie Lukash, welcome, uh, is gonna provide a, a presentation overview of this, uh, proposed partnership program, uh, the direction we're seeking tonight is, uh, whether you'd like to see city staff place a memorandum of, of understanding regarding an application for implementation of a project here in Cloverdale, uh, and to partner with Zero Waste Sonoma, as well as the partnership that Davis established with, uh, an entity that would, uh, would actually, uh, maintain and operate the, the CRV program, so with that said, I'll turn it over to Leslie, she's gonna provide, uh, Ms. Lukash is gonna provide a, a presentation on, on, on the program.
Great, thank you, um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, um, I'm going to do an overview of a potential, um, program to bring back CRV collection in Cloverdale, so, just a, a recap, in nineteen eighty-six, uh, the state of California passed the California Beverage Container Recycling and Little Reduction Law, also known as the Bottle Bill, to, um, create collection, uh, redemption centers throughout the state of California, in what's called established convenient zones, uh, the state of California establishes what a con, convenient zone is and where it is, so, um, we used to have twenty-four of these, um, redemption centers to collect bottles and cans, and we are, only have four left, one in Petaluma, two in Santa Rosa, and one in Windsor, that's it, um, this, you know, David mentioned some of the reasons why, but, um, we're in the situation that we're in, the state realized that, um, statewide, they were losing these CRV centers, so they passed, um, SB four fifty-eight, which authorized five, uh, pilot projects, but no funding to go with those pilot projects, so not one jurisdiction applied, um, they realized they need some funding behind this, um, new law, so, in twenty nineteen, they passed five million dollars for these five jurisdictions, um, to apply for funding for a grant, um, and each grant, um, they, they hope to split, split each grant, um, evenly, about a million dollars per project, so, we have been searching and researching, trying to figure out how to apply for this funding to bring, um, ten collection centers back, uh, we needed to partner with a certified, uh, bottle and can or CRV collector, um, we found one with the Petaluma Recycling Center, and they were willing to partner with us to try and make this happen, and we also needed to research what the underserved, um, convenience zones are, so, right now, there are Cloverdale, Heald Sparks, Sebastopol, Santa Rosa, Sonoma, and, uh, Petaluma, so those are the jurisdictions that we're hoping to get an MOU with, so that we can apply for grant funding to make this pilot happen, um, in this very, I skipped one, oh, there we go, so, this is the map that Cal Recycle provides to us that shows where unconvenient, um, unservice convenient zones are, and those are the blue circles, um, for Cloverdale, that is, um, and, and they're dictated by grocery stores, so that includes, um, grocery outlet and Raze here in Cloverdale, so we would need to locate, um, a, a collection program somewhere close to these, uh, grocery stores. Nice, posted. Thank you, um, you can, you can do one more, please, so, how the pilot would work is, um, customers would, uh, need to set up an account via a website or your smartphone, if you don't have either of those, uh, you could actually go to the library to set up an account, and, um, you would be given, uh, bags with a barcode on them, um, the customer would fill up bottles and cans in these bags, and they would take them to a drop-off center, um, and when the customer would get close to the drop-off center, the door would open, and they could put their bag in of bottles and cans, and when the container is full, the, uh, Petaluma Recycling, um, Center would actually come and pick up the bottles and cans inside, and bring them down to their center in, in Petaluma, where they, that bag would be tied to the customer, they would count out the bottles and cans and redeem that customer, um, the five cents that they are owed through the CRV program, and, um, on the back end, the customer can use that five cents either in the form of money, in wait, you know, with a few days to get their, uh, redemption back, so, um, and one of the nice things that I found out is, uh, Raze is actually, uh, their corporate headquarters is in Oregon, and so, this is a system that they're already used to, uh, we did reach out to Raze, um, corporate office today, to, uh, see if they would be a partner with us, um, right now, uh, Lucky's has, uh, six stores throughout Sonoma County in unconvenient zones, Lucky's, as a corporation, gave us the go-ahead, they'd like to work with us on the pilot project, Whole Foods is another grocery store who said that they'd like to work with us on the pilot project, and we're hoping Raze will say the same thing, especially since they have experience with this system up in the Oregon area, uh, so, uh, what I'm, my ask is that, um, you have a memorandum of understanding before you, um, that outlines the responsibilities that, uh, Zero Waste Sonoma will take on, essentially, we'll write the grant application, we will manage all the financing, we will, uh, do all the reporting that's required in the grant, um, and then we will work directly with the recycling, uh, center to make sure the bottles and cans, um, are redeemed, there's really, there's, the city's really not, um, you know, doesn't really have to do much, uh, we just need to have that partnership, per the state requires that, um, the JPA gets, uh, permission to do this on behalf of the jurisdiction, so the MOU clearly states what our responsibilities are, and, and we, you know, what, what the city, you know, doesn't have to be responsible for this program, we will maintain it and oversee it, so, um, the grant is a, a two-stage grant, um, what we're doing right now is cl, getting these MOUs, and then we have to submit the, um, request to Cal Recycle, they'll review it, and then we get to apply for the grant, so there's two phases, um, so we're not even at the grant application phase, we do need to hurry this process, because, um, there's only, uh, three slot, slots left, um, Cal Recycle's well aware that we have been working on this for months, and we have a really good shot, I believe, um, for this funding, so, um, I'm happy to take any questions you may have regarding this, uh, grant application and concept.
Thank you, um, before I turn it over to Councilmember Cruz to say a few words, she is our representative on Zero Waste, um, council members, are there any questions? Okay?
No, I'm just glad to see it happening, thank you.
Are we working?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, I just was wondering if you could, um, give us, uh, an idea of, um, the adoption rates in Oregon, and you said Maine, you just, now, how long does it kind of take for it to get up and running, and then what kind of, you know, community outreach is, would, would Zero Waste be responsible for educating the public that these are now available and usable, um, and then I had a couple of questions, just kind of about the end product, and we can, I guess I'm not, sorry, there we go, is that working?
Yes.
Thanks, Dan, okay, so, um, uh, I have a couple of questions, yeah, later, we can ask, talk about just recycling materials in general, and kind of where that's going in California, and then also, do you have an idea of, um, what the next step after, this is, obviously, a pilot project, um, what would, you know, and how long would it last for us, would the funding last, and then what's the plan for, you know, rolling out in, in a long-term solution?
Perfect, so, I'll answer that one first, um, it's a two, two-year grant, so, the, the pro, program would be completely funded for two years, um, and then, uh, but the grant actually lasts for five years, but the funding ends after two, um, and so, at that point, uh, right now, gro, grocery stores are supposed to be paying a hundred dollars a day for not having, uh, CRV collection center, right now, Whole Foods is paying a hundred dollars a day, um, all of them, because they don't have these co, collection centers, and?
So, Raze, everybody?
Yes, and, and Lucky's, the reason why they want to be a partner is they're fi, feeling this pressure across the state, and they, see, um, CVS has already been fined, I think, three point six million dollars for not having these, um, CRV collection centers, so, what we're asking the grocery stores to do is, after the, um, two years, is that they pay twenty-five dollars a day, we need about, uh, nine thousand dollars a year per site to make this work, and we need ten sites to make it work, so it's economy of scale, um, throughout the county, and, so, so far, the grocery stores are willing to do this, because they see this as a solution, um, they're hearing complaints from their customers that are coming in that say they want this, and so, they, um, I should say, all the grocery stores, but Safeway, um, corporation has told us, no, they will not work with us.
Yeah, I, I know that, I've also heard through other sources that they're working with, uh, California grocers.
Yes, they are going with their lo, lobbying organization, and we don't know what the grocers lobbying organization is gonna do, but we do know that we have, uh, other grocery stores who are, um, supportive of this concept.
Thank you.
Did I say anything?
No, I'm, I'm just curious to see how it rolls out in two years of funding, sounds like a good way to start it, and, yeah.
Councilmember Cruz, I know you've been working hard on this project, and I'd be interested to see, uh, the conversations that you've had, I think, with Ferber, maybe you can share that with us.
Well, I had conversation with one of the brothers, so, I need to have a meeting with the other brother, with, uh, Leslie, um, well, many people have questions about this, they definitely want this, but the city and the Public Works, uh, Department is concerned, what's gonna happen, um, in the six days before we get, um, the maintenance done by the Petaluma Group, and, uh, another concern that Mr. Ferber had was, what if people start leaving trash in the area, even though Raze owns the, the, the land, and it is their business, they still have to work with the Ferber Company, so, they were concerned about that, and I was wondering if you have any feedback on what has happened in other places regarding, um, additional trash that comes about, when people see that they cannot recycle everything.
I, we haven't heard, we, we have reached out to both programs in Maine and Oregon, and, uh, people leaving trash behind hasn't been a problem in those two states, um, that doesn't mean that could potentially happen, but, um, within our agreement with the Petaluma Recycling, um, Center, uh, they're actually gonna be responsible for maintaining and cleaning the equipment, and leaving the space better than when they go to pick up the material, they're gonna go out and make sure the space is clean and, and nice, so, um, on that container will be the number for the PR, uh, Petaluma Recycling Center, so, um, they are taking responsibility for making sure the site is, uh, maintained and clean.
Yes, and also, um, I, I didn't hear you, um, in the presentation, say what, uh, what's the processes for the people to be able to do this, could you please, uh, explain to the rest of the council?
Uh, so, a, a customer who wants to participate in this program would get an, an, a, um, online account, you can do that through your smartphone or through your computer, um, and if you don't have either of those, you could go to the local library and, um, access a computer and set up an account, and then there's bags that go with that, the bags will be free for the first two years, and each of the bags will have barcodes that are, um, that are connected to the customer, and then after the two years, the bags, um, will be five cents, so essentially, one can for one bag, um, the bags will be, um, at the depots themselves, um, we're, we're working on a way to secure them, um, the whole bin itself will be manufactured by the Petaluma Recycling Center, um, they're already ing, designing the engineering of the system and the computer system as well, so, um, so that, that's the system of how you, you access and get an account.
And another thing that the community needs to understand is that, uh, this will be secured by video footage?
Yes.
Um, because that's one of the concerns of, of the Ferbers, and, um, that, I think, will help in terms of control, uh, now, um, I have a question, if, uh, something goes wrong, and they cannot read the barcode, it, the machine doesn't work the barcode, or something like that, who would they access, would they have to, uh, be able to go, let's say, if Raze agrees to it, uh, would they go to Raze, or would they go somewhere else?
They would always go to the Petaluma Recycling Center, so the grocery stores, uh, is not a part of it in, in, so to speak, in that way, it's just, um, the independent depot, and the phone number on the bin itself is to the Petaluma Recycling Center.
So, they will call directly?
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, what is the deadline for you to submit the grant?
Well, uh, Cal Recycle gives us two years, but there's only five spots, two are already taken, uh, they know we're working hard to get our application in, so we're hoping to be number three or four, but we need to hurry, because who knows what other jurisdictions are doing. four, but we need to hurry because who knows what other jurisdictions are doing.
Yeah, I asked that because of the legal implications in terms of having the attorney review the MOU and so on.
Yeah, and I can tell you, all of the cities, except for Santa Rosa, have been, I mean, Santa Rosa's been very responsive, it's just harder to get on their agenda, but within the next two weeks, I'm on the agenda with all the other jurisdictions. Cloverdale is the first, so thanks for taking this item up so quickly.
Well, it's very important because it has been quite a pressure by our community to have this, and given that we have such transportation limitations, it's very important that we have a local CRV center. Thank you very much, Leslie.
I forgot to mention that the depot itself runs off of solar energy, so it doesn't even connect to the energy at the grocery store. It's self-containing.
I just have a few questions with respect to the grocery stores being fined $25 or $100 a day.
Hundred dollars.
So, in Cloverdale, we have two significant grocery stores. We have Grocery Outlet and Ray's. Are they both going to participate in this program? And if they do not, will they be fined?
If we put this, since they're so close to each other, they're in the same unserved zone, so the depot would take care of both locations at one time.
CVS is included, too.
Oh, CVS as well? Okay, all right. You mentioned if there's a problem with the reader or if it can't be read, the folks have to go to Petaluma?
No, just call Petaluma.
Just call?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Because I was going to say, you know, that's quite a ways from Cloverdale for a nickel can, so. And then, lastly, on the maintenance side, to alleviate the concerns of the Ferbers, can Councilmember Cruz let them know that, that they won't be responsible for the maintenance? They can call that number, and somebody will come up and take away the mattress and the furniture that's dumped there?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if there's furniture dumped there, they could definitely call us or the holler, but we'll, we'll work on all those logistics to make sure that the grocery store knows if, you know, if somebody does contact them by mistake, that they can have our information.
That is a legitimate concern that they should have because people just tend to do that, so.
Mm-hmm.
Let me open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to address this item, please come on up and tell us what you have to say, seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close that, bring it back to the council one more time. Any comments or suggestions? Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. Staff, I think you have the nod to move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to summarize, what the agency's asking for is, you know, city authorization to be able to submit a grant application to CalRecycle to fund this proposed pilot program. What the action that the agency is requesting from the city is approval of a memorandum of understanding, and what I think I hear from council is support for the proposed pilot project and support for the MOU. So, what we would do is bring it back, bring back the MOU for your consideration and adoption, which then would provide the agency with the necessary documentation from the city to support their grant application. I think, you know, there's no guarantees that, that this program necessarily would get funded, but the intent from the agency is to, you know, put, put a full faith effort into, you know, obtaining funding support for this, for this pilot program, which, which in turn, if it got funded, would be beneficial for, for our community. So, we'll, we hear that, we hear the council that we'll bring back the MOU, and something we'll, given, given the nature of the language in the MOU, Jose, as our city attorney, will take a look at, and will coordinate any of those proposed amendments to the MOU if needed with, with the executive director, but otherwise, bring it back on consent, recognizing that there seems to be significant support by the council for it.
Okay. Seems like everybody's nodding, so that sounds good. Thank, thank you for the presentation.
And if I could just add, I wanted the council to know that I have been working with the Fairgrounds, and they are very excited to start recycling there for all events, and so I'm working with them. We have funding to completely outfit the Fairgrounds with recycling bins, so for all events moving forward, once we get the bins to them, they'll have recycling.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, can we make the screen go away, and then we can move on? The next item is student liaison reports. Emma?
All right, so a lot has happened over the past few weeks. The Associated Student Body is continuing to fundraise, fundraise for our senior trip, and one fundraiser that everyone can help with is our next car wash on April 4th. Tickets are only $5, and you'll be able to get your car washed by the dedicated volunteers of our senior class. Another amazing fundraiser recently pulled off was Mr. Eagle. For those of you who don't know, Mr. Eagle is the high school's kind of lighthearted version of the Citrus Fairy Queen pageant, but with guys. There were eight contestants this year, all bringing their unique personality and talent to the stage. With such a great show, it didn't really come as a surprise, that for the first time in the history of Mr. Eagle, there was a tie. The two winners of Mr. Eagle were Finn Addison and Dylan Scarmella. What's more is the event raised $1,627.15, which will all go back into the senior class by funding part of our senior trip. But the week certainly didn't end there. That Saturday was the Farm-to-Table Classes Food Festival. The festival was a place for students to share culinary dishes of their own creation with their peers in the community. The festival was organized and promoted by the business class, so that provided them with firsthand experience on event planning and industry collaboration. Simultaneously, our culinary class, which is different from Farm-to-Table somehow, partnered with the photography class to create CHS's very own cooking show. The six-minute clip took a month of filming, editing, and preparation, but is now available for everyone to see on our website. In fact, one of the students behind this project was nominated to represent Cloverdale in a Sonoma County speech contest. His name is Evan Garis. He was chosen for his diligent work ethic and community service hours. On another note, spring sports have kicked off, and teams are already representing Cloverdale all over the county. For example, the tennis team will have their first meet tomorrow against St. Helena. Furthermore, the track team welcomed their new head coach, Ana Ramirez, just this week. And finally, I want to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of one of our teachers, Joe Dobbins, who had voter registration forms at hand for any student who wanted to vote but wasn't really sure how. And that's my report.
Thank you, Emma. Any questions from the audience or councilmembers?
When was the car wash?
April 4th.
You're not going to wait until then, are you? That's a ways off.
He might volunteer.
Okay. Well, the next item is the consent item. We have a few councilmembers that are going to recuse themselves. Before we get into that consent calendar, I just want to see if there's anybody that wants an item pulled, either from the public or from city council or staff. Okay, well, then the way I envision this working is I'm going to recommend that it's approved with, all the actions are approved with one, with one motion, and as your name is called, if you need to recuse, you can just recuse from item number seven, eight, and nine, or item number six. Does that work, Jose?
Can we just do separate votes?
On every one of them?
Just, just, I'm sorry, just if we could do just all the ones that everybody's voting together, and then we'll take on the ones that folks need to recuse themselves individually just for the record, so it's very clear.
Sounds good. Okay, the consent calendar, all items that I'm going to go over here in a second are going to be approved with one motion, and they are item number four, item number five, item number 10.
Sound moved.
Could we have a roll call, Irene, please?
One second.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, if I can, I believe Councilmember Cruz indicated she's recusing from item number 10.
Oh, number 10, okay, I'm sorry. So, then, we're actually only going to do, Irene, if you could amend that, please, under the consent calendar, we're going to do item number four and item number five.
And nine? Is that how I'm understanding?
Oh, nine, okay. Oh, I had nine circled instead of 10, okay. And item number 10. Motion, please?
I'm sorry, one more time. So, I have it for item four, five, and nine this first round.
That's correct.
Motion to approve four, five, and nine.
Second.
Roll call.
So, Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz is recused, and Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Yep.
Okay.
I think we were good for voting on that one, just not recusing herself.
Oh, no, okay, I'm sorry. And Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six on the consent calendar. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
One second, sorry, go ahead.
Can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Abstain.
Recuse.
Recuse.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Next is item number seven.
Motion to approve item number seven.
One second.
Roll call, Irene, please.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Recuse.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Next is item number eight.
Motion to approve item number eight.
No, a second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Recuse.
Councilmember Brigham? And Mayor?
I'm not sure about that one, Jose.
Let's go ahead and recuse, and then we'll figure out the...
Recuse.
Thank you.
The business.
Okay.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Now, if I've, if I've managed to check these off properly, then the one that's left is actually item number 10?
Nine.
Nine. Okay. Jason, you want to make that nomination, just so we can change things up a little bit?
Ten.
You want to?
For ten.
All right, motion to move?
Second.
Roll call, please, Irene.
So, Councilmember Cruz?
Recuse.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye, thank you, Irene. I think we did that.
I think we had it surrounded.
Yeah, we did that, right. Communications, any communications? No communications, okay. Public hearing, the first item is the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019. And I believe that report, David, is that yours?
I'll take that, Mayor. Mayor and council, every year, local governments are required by the State of California's Government Code to have an independent audit done that evaluates their financial statements at the end of the fiscal year. Included in your packet is a copy of the audit for fiscal year 2018-19. This, this audit was prepared, and I'm welcoming Mr. Terry Krieg, a certified public accountant to the DAAS. He's going to provide an overview of the basic financial statements for the fiscal year that ended June 30th, 2019, including providing an overview of some of the key financial highlights that were provided in the management discussion and analysis portion of the report. And with that said, I'll just turn it over to, to Mr. Krieg, and I want to just state that this is the last year that Mr. Krieg is able to provide auditing services to the city based on the legislation that's been adopted by our, our state legislature, so, but we've, we've appreciated all the...
Thank you.
Collaboration that Terry Krieg has provided to our finance department and our staff in performing our independent audits for, I think, the last five years.
Thank you. Terry, the council has the financial statement that you prepared, and they've had their packets for, for a couple of days now, so if you could just give us a light overview.
Okay.
We'd appreciate that.
I will, okay. I have completed my audit of your city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2019, and expressed an independent auditor's opinion that your financial statements do present fairly the financial position of the city's governmental activities and its business-type activities, and its major funds being the general fund, your retirement fund, bond proceeds funds, and the remaining governmental funds, and of course, your enterprise funds, your water, wastewater, and airport fund, all in conformity with county principles generally accepted in the United States of America. On a citywide basis, looking at the statements that present the city as a commercial entity, there was about a net $30,000 decrease in the overall net position of the city for the June 30, 2019 fiscal year. But that was a combination of two elements. It was a combination of a net increase in your business-type activities of about $500,000 and a decrease in your governmental activities of about $470,000, which resulted in that net loss of about $30,000. Your general fund ended 2019 in a good position with a $4.3 million fund balance, which was about $1.3 million better than at the end of fiscal 2018. Your special pension tax fund, which is somewhat unique to Cloverdale, ended June 30th, 2019 with a $890,000 fund balance. Your bond proceeds fund ended 2019 with a $2.6 million fund balance, and your other governmental funds, which are basically restricted for various specific purposes, ended 2019 with a $5.6 million fund balance. All of your business-type funds, being your water, wastewater, and airport, ended with positive cash balances, except, of course, for your airport, which has consistently had a problem with cash flows over the years because of its operations. And the financial position of your former redevelopment agency actually improved by a $1.1 million decrease in the net deficit as a result of debt retirements and allocation of monies. The best of your report contains the notes of financial statements, the most important points there about the fact the city has about $19.8 million in cash and investments at the end of June 30, 2019, which puts it in a good position to move forward with your ongoing activities. There were no real major capital additions to the city in 2019, except for some vehicle replacements and airport improvements. Your other post-employment retirement benefit liability is about $2 million at the end of 2019, and that liability is completely unfunded. Your net pension liability was about $9.5 million at the end of 2019 compared to actually $9.6 at the end of 2018. So, that's pretty much an overview of what's in your June 30, 2019 financial statements on an overview basis. I did provide the city with other additional reports on your appropriations limit, internal control, and then, of course, my letter to you as a council concerning the conduct of the audit had no particular difficulties in dealing with your staff, and your books were well-maintained. At this point, that's pretty much my summary. If you have any questions, be happy to respond if I can.
Thank, thank you, Terry. Councilmembers, are there any questions? I'm going to bring it back to the council here in one second, but I'd like to open it up to the public if there's any questions from the public pertaining to the financial statement for fiscal year end June 30th, 2019. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back up to the DAAS. Councilmembers, anything? Well, Terry, I have a couple. You know, I always like to ask you questions. And you know my favorite question, you know, is all the money there? Yes, it is. Good, okay. That's the most important thing. And then, secondly, on page 126, or page three of your report pertaining to the general fund balance, you say that it's $4.3 million, and 3.0 was from last year, and we added about 1.3 to that. So, I guess what I always like to see, and I couldn't seem to find it in your report, is I like to see what comprises that $4.3 million.
Of the general fund?
Yeah, as we open up that, that fund balance, I know there's going to be a lot of that that's already designated for programs and just haven't been spent.
There is. The, the, the city has followed a policy of designating a particular amount, which is about... amount, which is about $1.6 billion, for contingencies and future emergencies, which is basically an earmarking of that, uh, fund balance by the council saying, you know, in case there's emergencies, we want to have some money set aside, and it cannot be spent without your staff coming back to the, to City Council to give them permission to do so. And there is another, about $300,000 set aside, uh, which they call a signed fund balance, which I think is designated for some, uh, equipment-type items down...
Is that a, is there a page number that you're looking at here?
Is there what?
A page number?
Oh, yes, it's page 15. It's the, um, balance sheet for your governmental funds.
Okay, I, I just want to...
Sure. And the, uh, the left-hand column there is your general fund, and as you can see, there's a, a fund balance of four, $4.3 million there. And the little pieces, so to speak, are there. Bottom line is of that $4.3 million, there is $2.3 million which has been unassigned, which means it's available for any purpose you wish.
Okay. And, um, just, just lastly, um, thank you for answering that. Are there any areas of improvement that you think we could do? We're going to be losing you this year, needless to say, and, uh, it's always difficult, I think, uh, for another company to come in and take over the auditing position, but is there anything that you can recommend that we can do to make that, uh, a little more seamless?
Well, I, I think on an overall basis, you have, uh, excellent, uh, finance department with a good finance director and competent staff, and they do a very fine job of, uh, closing out the year-end and, uh, getting your books in order and very responsive to the audit process. I don't envision that the city of Cloverdale have any difficulty, uh, moving on. If there were two areas where I would, you know, financially suggest that you maybe take a hard look is, uh, is the unfunded $2.9 million other post-employment benefit liability. Most of, uh, my cities are funding that liability in cash. It doesn't have to be, you know, all funded at once, but it, that liability is just going to continue to grow, uh, unless the city starts putting aside some cash into an irrevocable trust. The other fund that I think that probably could use your attention is your airport fund. It has consistently had cash flow problems, and I have not seen that go away in the last several years. So perhaps, um, uh, a way of dealing with that is either looking at the rate structure of, of the fees in your airport fund, it's supposed to be self-supporting, which, you know, has difficulty doing, or if you prefer, as a matter of public policy, to, uh, budget within your operating budget, funding for the airport, airport on an annual basis to make up for that shortfall, so it doesn't seem to be an issue. Either way, but, uh, other than those two items, I think your general fund is healthy, your, your other funds are healthy, and you have a well-run finance department.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the dais one more time, if there's anything. Well, Terry...
Just wanted to say thank you, Terry. We've been dealing with you for so long, it's going to be odd.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I really appreciate the job you've done.
Thank you.
And I was just going to dittle that as well, Terry, thank you, and, and hopefully we can see you again in a couple of years, and...
Well, you know, I'm, the long, the short story is, if it doesn't work for, uh, for you with your new firm, well, after one year, I can come back for six more, so...
Well, we'll definitely keep...
And I'd be happy to do so, if that works out that way. Either way, uh, you probably won't have any problem with the firm I believe that you're hired, I know the firm, and, uh, we'll see how things go after that.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Terry, we appreciate the hard work you've done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is item number 12.
Mayor, if I can, sorry to, to interrupt, uh, the staff is asking that the council take action, uh, on the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Audit report tonight.
I'm sorry.
And approve, uh, i- if you so desire, uh, the fiscal year 2018-19 audited financial statements.
Okay.
Is that all you want, is just an action? So just by motion?
Let me see what this says.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the fiscal year 2018-2019 audited financial statements.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Walter? Councilmember, oh, sorry.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm reading, okay. Um, let me start that again. Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the next item, item number 12, is, uh, approving, um, the refi- refinancing of our bond, and David, this is you in Susie's absence? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't realize we had another presentation when I asked you to pull that up.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I, I'm delighted to, uh, introduce the team tonight that's going to be presenting this item. First, I'd like to, uh, invite Mr. Bill Falwell up, along with, uh, Jerry Lang from Almo Capital, and then Bond Counsel with Jones Hall, uh, David Pham, and, and James Waz- Wazniak. The item before you this evening is consideration of a resolution to, uh, refinance our existing redevelopment bonds. The successor agency, uh, pre- previously financed these bonds back in 2015. However, we're currently experiencing, uh, very favorable interest rates, and, uh, with, with, um, technical support from, uh, Bill Falwell, he's put together a, a package that identifies that if we refund the bonds, we can, uh, realize significant cost savings. I do want to point out, and I think, uh, Mr. Falwell will emphasize this tonight, uh, that the, the savings generated, uh, make it, uh, very worth our while to, uh, undertake this, this refinancing or refunding of bonds. It's important to note that, you know, in addition to, uh, saving the city, uh, it, this will also generate benefits for our, the, uh, all the other taxing entities, but in particular, the, uh, Cloverdale Unified School District, as well as the Cloverdale Fire District. So there, there's really benefits to, uh, this refunding that are beyond just the city itself. And tonight, Mr. Falwell is going to, uh, give you really, uh, a, a very in-depth overview of the proposed refunding effort that's, uh, uh, on the agenda item tonight. So with that said, uh, Bill, I'd like to, uh, have you and, and Jerry, uh, join us and, uh, give us a, go ahead and give us an overview of what's before council this evening.
Be happy to do so. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Kelly, I appreciate the introduction, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to talk about this excellent refinancing opportunity for the successor agency. Again, my name is Bill Falwell, I'm the president of W.J. Falwell Company, Public Finance. I work as a registered municipal advisor. I'm registered with Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board, have a, a license with them, I'm approved to do this work, and also with the SEC. This is a whole, uh, compliance regime that came about with the Dodd-Frank Act that was passed back in 2004, and it's been working its way through. Uh, so I've got, passed all my exams and so forth, and now I'm, I'm good to go. But in any event, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. Uh, I had the privilege of working as a financial advisor, uh, to the, uh, successor agency with the refunding of the 2015 bonds. Prior to that, I also had the privilege of working with the city to refinance some water bonds that they did in 2014. And because of the very favorable prepayment provisions on the 2015 bonds, they can now be refinanced again as of August 1st, 2020, with no prepayment premium. So you really have a chance to get a second bite at the apple, as I said. So I just wanted to make the introduction. Uh, we did, uh, we've met with the staff prior and gone through it, and then on the 27th of February, we met with, um, Councilmember Bagby and also the, uh, Mayor Walter, the Finance Committee, and went through the presentation. So they've had a chance to, you know, have me go through the presentation, ask questions and so forth, and kind of vet essentially what we're presenting to you tonight. So, uh, my role in the financing is that I'm like the team leader, if you would, and so I coordinate all the financing team's participants' work. Uh, I make sure that your goals and objectives are achieved with the financing, uh, and basically coordinate all the, uh, finance team members so that we have a great end product, and our goal is to save you money. And I've been in business since 1994, my own municipal advisory firm. Prior to that, I've been in the industry since 1985, worked as a bond underwriter. And prior to that, in another life, I also worked in city government and city management. So I've had a extensive career, uh, working with local government agencies. And what I usually try to do is to bring clients compelling ideas. Most of the time, it involves saving them money, because that's usually not very controversial, everybody needs more money. Sometimes we end up refinancing debt and then also issuing new money at the same time, so we refinance debt and issue additional money to fund new facilities. But in this particular case, we're just talking about a straight refinancing, and it's really not rocket science. I mean, it, there's a lot of details and so forth, but, you know, we're taking a higher-rate loan and replacing it with lower-rate debt. So in some, in essence, it's similar to refinancing the mortgage on your house. It's really a very understandable concept. So anyway, so that's really my role in the financing. I will take responsibility that all your goals and objectives are achieved, be staff's primary contact, uh, and, you know, arrange the conference calls and make sure we focus on the issues. I'll work with the staff, writing staff reports, and do everything we can to make this process, uh, as easy on the staff as possible. That's really our goal, that's our job, is to make this as easy on your staff so that they don't get sidetracked from priorities that you as the city council assign to them. And I think we do a pretty good job as a team doing that, so hopefully, uh, as we work through this, you'll agree. The other members of the financing team I'd like to introduce are Jones Hall, James Wazniak, and David Phama. They've been the city's, uh, longtime bond counsel, uh, for a number of years, and I've had the privilege of working with James the last four or five years. Before that, I worked with, uh, Chick Adams, who actually was the bond counsel in the 2015 bonds. But Chick is kind of in a point in his career where he's stepping back a little bit, letting some of the younger, uh, members of the firm take over some of his clients. And so James, I've been working with him, and he's outstanding, I've done several financings with, uh, James the last few years. And then David Phama, who, uh, works with, uh, James on the law of successor agency refinancing, he's here as well. So anyway, so that's part of that. And then the other, uh, component is Jerry Liang of Almo Capital, he's the bond underwriter. They will purchase the bonds on a negotiated sale basis. I, as your independent municipal advisor, I'll review the pricing of those bonds and make sure it's at market. I'll review all the costs of issuance and make sure they're reasonable, uh, in acceptable range, and so, and I'll work with, uh, I'll review his underwrite discount to make sure it's appropriate, uh, for the size of the deal and the credit and so forth. So anyway, so, and so Jerry, I've worked with him for three years, he's a tireless worker. He works very, very hard, he runs the great numbers, and he's really a team player and, and works very hard to make contributions to the team, and I know you'd be very pleased with him. I worked with Jerry as an underwriter for, we just recently did a deal for, uh, the Arvin, uh, successor agency, Jerry did that. I've worked with him in some smaller agencies, uh, up in Susanville area, and also in the Ridgecrest area, and he's done outstanding work, so I know that he'll, he'll serve the city's successor agency very well. And then the other party that's not here is the fiscal consultant, and they'll do a report that basically projects out the, uh, net revenues that will be flowing from the project area. And that's so critical, because then we want, that shows that there's enough revenue coming out of the project area to pay the debt service on the bonds, and then have a certain amount of debt service coverage, for example, like for every, you know, dollar fif- every dollar of debt, we have a dollar fifty of money that could be used for debt service, so that's what we call the debt service coverage factor, and his report will produce that, and that report is relied on by the rating agencies and the bond insurance companies to get the very best rating we can. And we think that you'd probably be up in the A category level rating, you know, if we would anticipate that, because the property tax revenue is a very secure stream of revenue, and it's a very sought-after, uh, type of bond issued today. There, I mean, uh, we can't do enough of these deals, I mean, investors are so hungry for, uh, rated and insured tax-exempt bonds. It's like the lowest rates in 40 years, right? And yet the taxes are still high, and there's been different, uh, federal legislation that's reduced the amount of supply of tax-exempt bonds. So you have a situation where rates are falling, supply is outs, you know, there's not enough supply for demand, and all this is driving the rates lower. So it's just an ideal time, you know, all the stars are lining up in our favor on this. So, anyway, so much for that. All right, so let me just, uh, give a brief overview here of the financing. So we're refinancing the 2015 bonds. The outstanding par is, is just under $27 million, $26 million. The principal payment, this is the amount that's left, $24,379 after the 8-1-19 principal payment. And as I mentioned earlier, the first optional redemption date is August 1st, 2020, at 100%. That means that the bonds can be paid off, the 2015 bonds with no prema- prepayment premium. So that's a very favorable provision we were able to obtain for the successor agency back in 2015, and it's giving, as I said, kind of a second bite at the apple, which is great. So anyway, um, we're going to, now I'm going to pivot to, uh, James Wazniak to talk about the debt management policy, and this is a policy that every local government agency is required to, to have, and James, I'll let you comment.
Good, good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. James Wazniak at Jones Hall, along with my partner, uh, Dave Phama. Nice to be here with you again tonight. We have served as, as bond counsel to the city's successor agency for many years. Uh, just real briefly here on the debt management policy, as, as Bill mentioned, it is a, kind of a new, a requirement under state law. Any local agency issuing bonds has to have a debt management policy in place, certain requirements, uh, the purpose of those bonds, how you're going to track proceeds and that kind of thing. So we've worked with city staff, um, to put together this, uh, form here, um, and, uh, would, would, it's on the item, um, after this item, actually, for approval, so we do have it, uh, for you tonight.
Mayor, Council, it's, it's item number 14, uh, which will, will, will follow this, will follow another item that's after this item. We've got a few items tonight.
Uh, and then, uh, just, uh, to continue on for the, uh, item we're actually on is, is the resolution, uh, we'll be asking you to approve tonight, which would actually go through the, um, approval of the bond refunding. So we'd be issuing new bonds of the successor agency to repay those old bonds. Uh, we do that pursuant to two main agreements, an indenture of trust, that's the legal document pursuant to which the bonds are issued. There's a trustee who kind of stands between the successor agency and the bondholders, transfers all the payments, um, to those ultimate bondholders, could be moms and pops, could be different mutual funds, pension plans, you know, all those kind of investors that are out there, again, interested in municipal bonds. And then an escrow agreement, uh, where we take in the money from the new bonds, we'll, we'll get proceeds, and we'll send them into the escrow agreement to pay off the old bonds. Uh, that's really all we're doing here. Again, as Bill said, very straightforward, uh, transaction to lower our borrowing cost. And, uh, the resolution all, also authorizes, uh, your city staff to enter into professional services contracts, uh, with each of the team members here, um, to continue our work on the transaction.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll just have a little summary of the financing plan. Basically, we're going to refinance the Series A bonds, would be almost just under $20 million, $19,855,000 on a taxable basis. And then we'd have a small taxable piece, the bond counsel has looked at the documents and said this part has to be, uh, refunded on a taxable basis, so that some prior bond proceeds that this, uh, successor agency is still holding, they could be spent on projects legally, okay? So we, we have a lot of laws we have to comply with in our business, and so our bond counsel makes sure we do that. But this is really a good thing, because it, it creates the potential that these funds, at least a portion of these funds, the one point, $1,240,000, could be spent on various city's projects throughout your community, public works, projects of that nature. So basically, the purpose of the, uh, refunding is to lower the annual debt service, and then what that does is then, the, the revenue for payment of the debt service on these bonds comes from property tax revenues within the project area. And so to the extent that we don't need as much... And so to the extent that we don't need as much property tax revenues coming out of the project area for debt service on the bonds, then that differential, what we call residual revenue, flows to the city. And flows to not only the city or the successor agency, but all the stakeholders within, within the project area, primarily public schools. Public schools are going to get like over fifty-one percent of all the savings, which is typical. I mean, a lot of people don't realize it, but if you look at your property tax bill, public schools always get usually over fifty to sixty percent of all that revenue. So they're going to be huge beneficiaries of the refinancing, in addition to the city itself will as well. So anyway.
Bill, could you talk into the mic just a little bit?
Oh, yeah. So the, that is better, isn't it? Sorry. But, so all the taxing entities within the project area are going to have very significant benefit, and especially the public school. Because the public schools, you know, they usually get fifty, sixty percent of the property tax revenues collected. The cities usually get a relatively small share. Although the city of Cloverdale's share, at twenty-two percent, is higher than a lot of other cities. We recently did a refinancing for the city of Arvin Successor Agency, and they only got five percent. And so you're at twenty-two percent, so you're kind of in fat city compared to them. But they went, they went ahead and did it because they felt there was so much benefit for all their stakeholders in their community that it made sense to do, and it did. And so they were very happy to do it. And, you know, so, so they went forward and they got reimbursed for all their staff time they had spent on the financing, so they were happy about that. Finance director used the funds to buy some new software, so he was thrilled, through his accounting department. Okay, so then we go to financing plan. So here we are before tonight, just that you had, when you passed this resolution, you would essentially authorize the city manager to engage the financing team. And then the next step after you would approve this tonight, the resolution, then we would have to get approval from the Sonoma County Oversight Board, okay, of the financing. So we would make a presentation to them similar to this. And then once we obtain their approval, then we send their resolution they would approve along with the staff report. We'll draft that again, and actually send to the Department of Finance. There's a lot of hoops to jump through. This is why the process usually takes four to five months to get the necessary approvals. And DOF has up to sixty-five days to respond. And they usually always approve. They may have some comments or questions that we'll help answer. But, you know, usually if there's, and it'd be some very significant savings here, that they will, we anticipate approval. And then once they approve it, then, once we get that, then the successor agency will be asked to approve the prospectus, which is the bond offering document, that we would then go out and market the bonds after we have a formal approval from the Department of Finance. We kind of do some things, we track concurrently with them, so we're not just sitting around waiting for it. We'll work, Jerry will work, and we'll work on getting a bond rating from standard reports. And then we'll also, after we get the rating, we'll go out and talk to the bond insurance companies to get quotes for the insurance. And the insurance usually pencils out because then you get like a double A rating. And so we just, we run numbers though and say, well, does it make sense to buy the insurance? Well, in most cases, it always does, okay? But we will, you know, run numbers to, to make sure that's a good economic decision. And most of these refinancings are done with bond insurance today. So it's just, it's just where the market is. And they, they know in their premiums that they have to, they want the deal, they're going to have to not be too expensive. So anyway, it, it is what it is. But anyway, so then, so then we'll have the official statement, we'll have a negotiated public sale. I'll, I'll look at comparable sales in the market that are going on. Jerry will provide some comp sales, and we'll look at that and help him determine what, how your bond should be priced. So that's really how that works. I review that to make sure you're independent, look at that. I don't anticipate any issues on that or problems, but it's part of my role to become an independent check and balance on all that. And then once, so we usually then have two, two, two days to price the bond issue. We have a pre-pricing day, will involve your staff, you've authorized your staff, sorry, you authorize your, you authorize your staff to, you know, to, to sign a bond purchase agreement after the, the proposal from the underwriters accepted that I'll, I'll review. So the, and then, and then we close usually two to three weeks later after a bond purchase agreement is executed. So that's, that's pretty much the financing plan, the steps. It takes probably four to five months because of all the, all the approvals, but that's just the nature of the game. But, but these bonds are very sought after by the investment community. I think we're going to do very, very well. Rates have dropped considerably. As you probably noticed, financial presses, the whole market is like broken. If you watch Jim Cramer, he said the market's broken. But interest rates have really declined, and I think a lot of it is kind of fear and panic. I think once we get through this, and we will get through the current virus, that I think rates will, at least US rates, will go back up some, a bit closer to what we saw before all this hit, hit the press and all this happened. But I still think they're going to be down, you know, more than they have been in the past. And so hopefully, even though it's a sad thing, I think we'll be able to take advantage of lower rates. Of course, our rates have always been higher than other countries' rates. If you look at the ten-year treasury in England or, you know, Germany, all these places, they have much lower rates than ours. So as I've looked at that, I thought our rates are too high. You know, we, our rates should come down. Okay, I'm not a banker, so I'm worried about trying to make a spread a living. But it just seems like our rates have been a lot higher than some of the other Western governments. If you look at the Wall Street Journal, they list the ten-year government debt of other Western countries. So we'll see. But I think we're going to come out really, really well with our sale. So we just have to kind of process through it. So anyway, I'm going to ask Jerry to come up and just review the savings if he would. The savings that we are showing you are really understated. We'd be doing better today if we were doing this, this deal today. But we'd rather understate the savings than overstate. But the good news is, is that the markets come our way, and I, I think we're going to come out better than what we're habitually estimated.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jerry Liang from Alamo Capital. I'm, work as the banker on the transaction, which means that I will structure the new bonds along with work with support in creating the credit presentation, going to the rating agencies and the credit enhancers. So on this slide here, I just want to represent, it represents the current debt service of your two thousand fifteen bonds, which is about one point eight million dollars. Based off of the market on February seventh of two thousand twenty, assuming a double A rated bond insurance, insurity bond in lieu of a cash funded debt service reserve fund, we're looking at debt service of about one point six million dollars. So that's a savings of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. As Bill mentioned, I took a look prior to coming here to see, in this current market where you would be, the savings would be about a hundred and seventy, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. So you get a little bit better savings now because yields have gone down a bit. So the total savings is about two point eight million dollars based off of the February seventh rates. Looking at the next page, the all-inclusive interest cost, which includes the cost of issuance, which is the cost to all the professional fees, is about two point seven percent. And that's in comparison to your current coupon, which is, I think it was like three point eight four percent. Again, budgetary debt service savings, about two point seven million. Your net present value cash flow is about two point four million. And on net present value benefit basis, that's ten point two percent. The general percentage is about three percent. If you have three percent net present value benefits, typically you refund it. You've got ten percent as of February seventh in the current market. As I said, I ran the numbers, it's about twelve percent, or close to twelve percent. So you've got a lot of work, a lot of room to work with in terms of the savings. As Bill mentioned, the savings breaks down to various taxing entities. Looking here, what highlighted in yellow, you've got the City of Cloverdale General Fund at about twenty-two percent. You have funding going into your Calpers Fund, which is about thirteen percent. Another thing to note is your Fire Protection District gets about a little over five percent. So that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total savings from the refunding. School districts, they benefit the most. They're at about fifty-two percent of your total savings. So you'll see up there various different education services there from the Cloverdale Area Wide Unification Fund receiving twenty-two percent. Cloverdale Unified, seven percent. And then there's a junior college, and then the school equalization aid as well. So with that, I will go to the cost of issuance for Bill.
Right, great. Okay, so now we've put together the estimated cost of issuance. Thing I want to mention about this, that virtually all these costs are contingent on closing, okay? So if this financing didn't close for any reason, the agency's not going to really be out any money. And I just want to make that point, okay? That's how we usually work. Most time, we always work contingent on closing. That's how I've worked like, you know, for over thirty years. I've never really had a bond issue. At the time, I didn't close. Most of the time, they close. Because we don't really approach an agency if we don't think we can do something to help them, and usually it, it works out. But the other thing too, look, reviewing this cost of issuance, we've put in a twenty-thousand dollar budget to reimburse the staff. So all the time, the time that the staff meets with us to discuss it and so forth, they can be reimbursed for that out of bond proceeds. And I will help your staff compile kind of a timesheet, if you would, just based upon the schedule to assist them in getting reimbursed from the, from the bond proceeds for time that's invested. And that'd be time of the city manager, the finance director, Kevin Thompson, you know, whoever, whoever on your staff touches this, even your city clerk, it can all be reimbursed for their costs. And so I'll work with you to make sure that the city staff gets reimbursed for the time they spend on the financing. Because it really, you're doing this not only for yourself, but for the benefit of the other taxing entities. I mean, you're, you're, you know, their staffs aren't doing anything really, right? You're doing all the work. And so it's only right that you should reimburse your staff for the time they spent that's helping a lot of these other taxing entities. So the various fees are, are outlined here. You know, municipal advisor fee with the estimated costs of, my expenses would be eighty-one thousand, bond counsel would be eighty-three. Those expenses are billed at cost. We don't, you know, mark any of those things up. It's just, you know, it is what it is. Disclosure counsel, that's the attorney, James Hall would prepare the prospectus, which is the offering document that investors look at. And so they, now it'd be the bond counsel, but the disclosure counsel prepares the prospectus. All that has to comply with the latest legal requirements, so it's really important. The underwriter counsel, the underwriter, they get basically paid on the size of the deal. And I will, you know, review that, but basically based upon this, it's estimated about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars and change. And again, none of these fees get paid if we don't close. So you're not on the hook really. I mean, you pay them, but it comes out of the proceeds, but you know, it's just, you're not at risk, here's what I'm trying to say. And then the fiscal consultant, that does this report that will go into the prospectus. It's what the rating agencies rely on to come up with a rating, and also the bond insurance companies. And so I put a fee in there. Now their fee is the only fee that isn't contingent, but I don't anticipate we're not going to be able to close. And so in the unlikely event that we didn't close, okay, and they weren't able to be paid out the cost of issuance, the agency can still request to be reimbursed through their ROPS process per our bond counsel. So you could still be reimbursed if for some reason you had to front that out of your own pocket, you can still be made whole. So I just wanted, wanted to point that out to you. The rating agency's fee is like twenty, about twenty-six thousand dollars. And here again, if this, this fee would have to be paid if we didn't close, but we are, okay? But here again, the agency could be reimbursed for that fee out of the ROPS process. So it's really, you know, there's not a downside, you know, for the agency. I want to make that really clear. Because I know these, you know, these numbers float around, it could be worrisome, but it, it can all be covered. And so we have the credit enhancement, insurity bond fee, that would be in lieu of reserve fund. This is what we've estimate. Trustee, escrow agent, you know, the, the banks, it would be Union Bank. I've talked to Susie Holmes, and she likes Union Bank, who's the current paying agent on the two thousand fifteen bonds. So they would pay the bondholders their interest in principle when due. And so we put a fee in there. There's some other miscellaneous fees, like we pay, we have to pay the State of California a fee, California Debt Advisory and Investment Commission, they get a, a fee. So they would be paid a fee that would be a maximum amount of five thousand dollars. So anyway, these are just kind of an outline of the fees. I wanted to review that to you, with you. I wanted to emphasize that they're, you know, basically you're not at risk for these fees. And so I wanted to just kind of walk through that. And then we've, we've have submitted the financing team professional service agreements that outline the fees, so everything is fully disclosed to, to the members of the city council. Okay, so the last thing is the summary schedule. And we'll, we'll, we will revise this as needed going forward, but here is the eleventh. We're here tonight before you to ask for your approval of the resolution approving the refinancings. And then the next, the next meeting, right now, it wouldn't be until May twenty-second. So that's quite a while. And I know that Councilwoman Bagby, she asked Susie Holmes, and I don't know if Susie's had a chance to talk to them, to see if we could get on their agenda quicker, if they'd be willing to be more quickly. If they can, we'll just stick with the, with the date they've selected. If they're willing to move that up, then we'll all be responsive and we'll come up here earlier and we can get to the market quicker. So that's really, you know, staff's going to work on that. There's no guarantees, but we'll try to see if we can't get that moved up. But if not, we'll make do with the twenty-second of May. And so then, on July twenty-second, assuming we meet with the Oversight Board on the twenty-second of May and get their approval, then we would come back before the successor agency to have you approve the preliminary official statement and prospectus. So we'll be back again. Hope we don't outwear our welcome. And so they would approve that in a form of a bond purchase agreement. They wouldn't have all the numbers in, that would all get put in after we final price the bonds. It would be a form of bond purchase agreement. And so we, we try to get all those documentation done in advance of when we anticipate approval from the Department of Finance. And so then we would anticipate approval of the refinancing by the Department of Finance on or about July twenty, twenty-sixth. And then we would close two or three weeks later. We've estimated around, price the bonds on the thirteenth of August, and then close on about the twenty-seventh. And of course, we're hoping we can move it up a little bit, and so it's not so far out. But that's, you know, that's kind of our perspective, and if we can get it done quicker, we will. So that really concludes our presentation. I hope we didn't take too much time. I'm sure all this is a little bit new to some of you. We had a chance to go through it in detail with Mayor Walter and also Council member Bagby. And so if you have any questions, if anybody in the financing team, we're happy to respond right now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council members, any questions?
Yeah, I have one, I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly. So the, the cost of issuance, which would essentially be the, the cost that would be required in order to move forward with, with refinancing the bond, is about six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
Right, and that includes the underwriter's discount, everything. That's what we're estimating.
We're looking at a total savings over the course between now and twenty thirty-nine of two million, seven hundred and eighty-one, of which that could in sense pay back.
Oh, yes, yeah, yes. And those, those savings are net of these costs of issuance. So those savings that Jerry reviewed with you, they are net. So those are net savings.
Oh, so that factors in that they're going to be some expense.
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, that's a very good question. I should have mentioned that, I apologize, I didn't. But those savings are net.
You had made a mention that there's a process for seeking reimbursement for the fact that other agencies will benefit from the, the bond reissuance. Can you go into a little bit more detail about that?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a function of any time that staff spends on it, they can be reimbursed for that out of the cost of issuance. And I will work with the staff in terms of compiling their time, and that they'll assign some hourly rate, you know, whatever their time is, plus benefits, and maybe even a little bit of overhead possibly, so that, so that the city staff could be reimbursed for their time they spent on this. And it really benefits all the taxing entities because you're the lead agency, you're the ones that have to initiate the refinancing of this bonds. I mean, the school district can't say, well, we're going to do it if you won't. See, they're dependent on you. So you're really doing a good deed for all your taxing entities. So if you go to, you know, your local meetings of elected officials, I mean, it gives you a little bit of bragging rights, I think, you know? Here, you've taken upon yourselves to do this, and it's benefits, you know, all the stakeholders in your community. It's really a, a great thing. It's a great opportunity for you to do good for your community.
So those... So those, those reimbursement costs, which are detailed here in the cost of issuance, which you've advised is part of a gross figure that's been reduced to reach this net figure of two point seven?
Yes.
Are then the percentages broken down for how it's divvied up based on the net figure following those reimbursements, or based on the gross figure before the reimbursements are considered?
Let's see, let me see if I follow your questions. So in other words, yeah, you see, that's a, that's a residual revenue factor that each agency gives.
Okay, based on the net, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
No, you're right, okay. Okay, very good.
Mayor, council, if I can, just elaborate on, on those, the share of residual revenue allocations. Those are based on the tax rates that's set by the county auditor, or in the county, county tax collector. So I, I believe what happens during this analysis, they basically pull those rates so that you can see what each, when, when, of the one percent that is our standard property tax rate, it's broken down into various percentages to each of the respective taxing entities, and that's set by the county. And that's basically whatever revenue is saved from this refunding gets allocated back to those taxing entities in the percentage that the, the underlying tax for the, for this particular tax area.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby, then Councilmember Cruz.
Yeah, thanks so much. I just, I don't know if people can really see it at home, but I just want to say that our, just to reiterate, that the, the total savings per tax, on all of the taxing entity is two point seven eight.
Right.
Right. And so the, and for people who can't see it, the Cloverdale Unified is looking at one ninety-five, one hundred ninety-five thousand. And where was, where's Cloverdale Fire at the top there? So that's one forty-nine.
Right.
So, but commutatively, yeah, across the board for the, for the community, it's not for the city of Cloverdale.
Correct.
Just because I don't think people can quite see that unless they pull up the packet.
Yeah.
So if they're just watching the video, so yeah, commutatively for the, for the, for the entire community would be two point eight.
Right.
Great, thank you.
Right. Councilmember Cruz.
Now, in terms of the expenses, are those always estimates, or are they quite expenses for, yeah?
Yes, those are pretty accurate estimates. They're not just, you know, it's based upon the professional service agreements proposed. And just, you know, well, we, that's what we do, you know? We estimate these fees. And so, but all the professional service providers, we will have written agreements, you know, with the successor agency, which will specify everything, so they're not, you know, they're firm, right? They're, you know, they're firm estimates. They're not going to go up or, you know, they're basically reflect professional service agreements.
But, so it could be a little bit more or less?
Right, right. So I mean, they're not, they're not like, they're not going to be...
Not significant.
Yeah, we have some like miscellaneous fees at the bottom, I think, that we discussed. But we're real close. We get pretty close on this. And we'll fine tune that as we go forward, once we finalize. But these, you know, most of the fees are all professional service agreement fees, and they're all detailed in our contracts that we've presented to the cities. Those aren't going to change, you know? So this is really close.
It's like buying a house.
Yeah.
Councilmember Cruz, anything else?
Yes.
No, that's it, thank you.
Well, I just have a couple of questions, if I can read my own scribble here.
Uh-huh.
So the city of Cloverdale, based on slide fourteen, is going to get twenty-two point zero seven plus twelve point nine nine. So we're going to get about thirty-five percent of that in one way or another. How do the other agencies know that we've done this? Do they get a notice in the mail? Or how do they know that the city of Cloverdale stepped forward and did this reinsurance?
Well, some of the taxing entities will be set on the board of the Sonoma County Oversight Board, I presume, so that, you know, they would get notified by that. Certainly, we can work and develop a press release. We've done this for other clients, that after we close the financing, I'll personally write, I'll have Jerry look it over, and James, we'll write a press release that then we would submit to your staff, a draft, of course, you'd have to review it, put together a press release, and we could have as much detail as you want. We could take this slide right here and basically change the numbers based upon the final pricing. Again, we think we're going to come out better than this, right? That's what we think. And so then you could share that with your neighbors, your other taxing entities, send out a letter. I'm sure they'll be thrilled.
I think that would be great for us to, to do that.
Yeah. So we can have a press release, you can put in your paper, you know, kind of without all the detail, and then we can provide, we can update this slide here that you could share with the other taxing entities.
Yeah.
You know?
I think that would be great to give us a little pat on the back.
Right.
But just getting into that, kind of a segue, is, you know, taking advantage of the current financial climate now.
Yes.
You know, getting in front of the, into, into the county oversight board for them to approve this, I mean, could you use that as a opening salvo? You know, please hear this early so that we can take advantage of this and save your tax dollars? Or do you think they're pretty much just headstrong on staying on the calendar?
No, I, I think that Suzie Holmes, the finance director, and David Carey, they, they know people at the county, and, and they're certainly going to approach them. And we can do that too, but probably the staff would be more effective, because, you know, you're all part of the same county. So I don't know if Suzie or David's had a chance to approach them. I think we want to kind of get through this meeting first, and then once, once we get the necessary approval, then we can kind of freed up to move forward on that item.
Mayor, council, and staff's really happy to reach out to the county staff that oversee and provide staff to the oversight board to see if we can get this scheduled as soon as possible. Obviously, the dates that's reflected in the general report is just, you know, their next regularly scheduled meeting date, so they, they'd have to schedule a special meeting. But we'll underscore certainly that this is opportune time to bring this forward so that we can try to get their approval, you know, as soon as possible. We, we are obviously subject to, to their review and approval, and subsequently submittal to the California Department of Finance. But in this case, because there is, you know, such a significant savings, it's really opportune for us to, to bring this forward, because it's going to, you know, it is, it is generating a saving. So we certainly meet the legal test, but beyond that, it just, because of such favorable interest rates, this is just a really great time to bring, bring this forward.
And I'm sure the council members up here on the dais know some of those people.
Chris Rogers, the sheriff, so.
So, you know, we can, we can help with that, with that task as well. My last final question is pertaining, I think it's important that, that we discuss slide nine, that one point two four, Series B taxable bonds. You had mentioned that it is spendable for capital projects, but at the presentation that you did at the finance subcommittee, there was some gray area on that, whether it really could be or not. So if you could just clarify that for the folks at home and my fellow council members?
Yeah, thanks. James Rosiniak, again, at Jones Hall. On the taxable versus tax exempt, the idea here is we're refunding twenty fifteen bonds, which refunded two thousand six, two thousand seven bonds. When those two thousand six and two thousand seven bonds were issued by the then redevelopment agency, that redevelopment agency had to have a reasonable expectation of spending the proceeds within three years. That's an IRS requirement to issue tax exempt bonds. And again, that was obviously back in two thousand six, two thousand seven. We understand at least one point two million dollars of unspent bond proceeds are still remaining with the successor agency slash city. There may be a little bit more. We're going to work with city staff on that to, to fine tune that number. But at least one point two million. And so the idea is, here we are in twenty twenty, and we've got unspent bond proceeds from two thousand six, two thousand seven. The IRS is not going to look favorably on the successor agency issuing tax exempt bonds. Those monies are still available. So we avoid a tax problem, a federal tax problem, by issuing taxable here. It does not change the status in any way of the ability of the successor agency to spend those monies from a state law perspective. So I know the staff has, has had correspondence, has worked with the Department of Finance on, you know, their fund balances and what dollars are available to the successor agency. There's the fund deficit still within the successor agency. So those issues are not being resolved by, by anything we're doing here. Those, those are kind of a separate conversation, and the timing of that is separate. But what we're doing with that taxable series is really just eliminating any risk from a federal tax law standpoint.
Okay, thank you. Council members, one more time before I open it to the public, anything? Okay. Any of the, Martha, go ahead.
You mentioned, you mentioned that it would take between five to six months to close this.
Yeah, if we...
So the interest rate would be the one at the time of closing, or is it retroactive?
Well, the interest rates are locked in when the bonds are priced. And they're usually, so we price the bonds, meaning, you know, the bonds are sold, the city would approve the bond purchase agreement that lists all the rates within the bonds that are sold, the rates and yields. And then we would generally close about two to three weeks thereafter, after the bonds are priced or sold.
So that's at, at the end of the process?
Yeah, at the, at the end of the process, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, members of the public, all three of you, anything? Jeff, no? Okay. All right, then we're going to bring it back to the dais, and I believe there's a resolution on page one ninety-two, if I'm reading this right.
I'll offer the resolution. It's a resolution of, is this, is this on? Maybe. A resolution of the Cloverdale Community Development Successor Agency approving the issuance of refunding bonds, approving the execution and delivery of an indenture of trust and escrow agreement relating thereto, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto.
Second.
Irene, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is a presentation by Jones Hall on using Melrose Community Facilities District to finance public services and facilities.
Would you be bothered to do a quick recess? Is that okay?
No, I'm fine with that. Why don't we take five and give you a chance to change your slides and all? Thank you.
Good thinking. Good thinking.
Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all... Right. Melanie's ran out of the wall.
About what?
She already sent us a list of the successor agency board members. Chris Rogers. That's the one I'm going to... Oh, okay. See that? Oh. Whoa. He's got all of them. 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 He's got all of them.
Is often and usually something less as opposed to an assessment district where a fixed amount is assessed every year. So I'm going to turn it over to James now, and he's going to go into just a little more detail. We'll try and keep it light in not too long. I know that it's cold in here. Thank you.
And James, that mic will strain out if you don't have to bend.
Let me just pull it up a little bit like that maybe. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we'll kind of finish this off quickly. Dave gave you a good overview, just a little bit more of the detail here, the items you need. As Dave said, two-thirds voter approval could be registered voter if you're talking about a large area like a citywide kind of CFD. If there's more than 12 registered voters, it's a registered voter vote. If you've got a landowner situation, undeveloped land, then you just have a landowner vote. There's a rate and method, that's how you apportion the tax. So it's not just a set dollar amount per parcel. It can be if that's the desire of the voters and the council forming the CFD, but it can be very flexible, you know, based on square footage, based on commercial versus residential versus industrial. So we often see that, and that's the rate and method of apportionment is the document you put that into. We have to have a boundary map, of course, who's in the CFD. Is it citywide? Is it a new development area? So we create a boundary map. There's a notice of special tax lien that gets recorded against the property so future property owners know that there's a tax there in addition to the normal tax rate. Let's move on here. Reasonable basis, as Dave mentioned, the CFD law is just a modernized version of assessment district law. So you're not tied into proving a specific benefit for a particular parcel in order to levy the tax. It's what was voted on by the voters that approved the rate and method by two-thirds voter approval. So any reasonable method of apportionment is acceptable. Again, on the services side, you set a maximum tax. You can escalate it each year. You cannot issue bonds to pay for that services, and the city kind of decides if there's a foreclosure situation, what the timing on that is if someone's not paying their special tax. Versus on the facility side, you want to give bondholders some assurance. You're issuing bonds. If people don't pay, you, the city, will foreclose on their parcels in a relatively short amount of time. It's usually three installment payments, say, so a year and a half kind of thing. So you're not going too quickly. But if they're not paying, the debt service is not going to be paid on the bonds, and that's why that foreclosure coming is very critical on the facilities or bonded side of things. Again, you can escalate, not more than 2% per year. There has to be an end date on the tax on the facility side, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, something along those lines is pretty common. And if the council were to want to move forward on some kind of CFD, the first step is adoption of a goals and policies document, kind of like the debt management policy that's before you. Actually, the next item tonight is required by state law. Similarly, under the Melrose law requires goals and policies. How will you implement a CFD? How will you determine who is charged what under a rate and method and that kind of thing? So we can obviously provide examples to the council and staff if we do want to move forward. You can get a petition from a particular landowner. Again, that's more the developer situation. They want to finance facilities. They might petition the council to create a CFD, but that's not required. The council can act of its own initiative. And it basically requires two council actions 30 to 60 days apart. You have a resolution of intention that, hey, we're thinking of doing a CFD. Here's our boundary map. Here's our rate and method. Here's who's in the district. And then 30 to 60 days later would be a second action of the city council. And it's a little bit small font here. Apologize for those looking at home. But the second set of council actions is, again, that formation of the CFD. You can have an election that night if you've got maybe just one landowner. If you're talking about a larger group, a citywide kind of thing, you're going to go out onto a more of a regular ballot probably on a March or November kind of election timeline. So you're going to be 90 to 180 days later if you don't have just that single landowner. Assuming again that it's approved, the landowner or the registered voter is approved, you can declare the special tax effective, record a notice of the special tax lien, and move on to bonding if that's part of what would be part of the CFD. This slide just kind of summarizes again that there's facilities, there's services, you're setting maximum rates here. You can annex parcels in later. So if you do have a development situation, maybe the developer has a couple of parcels in the initial boundary, but then they annex a few other parcels in later once they have a better sense of their development plan. Similarly, if you were to think about doing city services, you could start with a smaller kind of one project, one development project that might be the first kernel, if you will, to a city services kind of CFD. And then as other projects in the city develop, you annex those other projects into that city services CFD. So that's a pretty common way to proceed. There's even a shorthand way we can do it using future annexation areas so we don't have to come back to the city council all the time. We can have landowners sign basically a written agreement to come into the CFD and not have to come to the city council for every annexation. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Wow, I think I got it all down. I'm going to do the next presentation.
Well, you've heard it twice now, Mr. Mayor, so.
Yeah, I know. Well, council members, that was a lot to digest. I know I have some questions, but please, if you have any questions at this point or if you'd like to wait for a little bit.
Oh, wait.
Okay, well, then I guess I'll go. And I've got a couple of questions. On the vote, is that going to be the property owner? Or I know on the Melrose, or I don't know on the Melrose, actually on the community assessment district for facilities, is that the property owner? Who actually gets the vote on it?
Yeah, so it comes down to who's in your boundary. Do you have 12 registered voters within your boundary of your CFD or less than 12? Okay? If you've got less than 12, you've got a landowner vote. So it's the landowners within the CFD, and they vote by acreage. So again, the typical situation, a single landowner on undeveloped land, but you could have a couple of landowners. Now, if you've got more than 12 registered voters, so you're looking at a larger area or it's a more developed area, then it's a registered voter vote, just like any other city election. Whoever's the registered voters in that CFD boundary.
Okay, so basically a tenant can endet the property owner with a new tax.
Yeah, if it's a registered voter vote, it's just whoever's the registered voters in that CFD.
Yeah, I mean, we have certain sections in town, and I think I spoke with Bill before on, you know, there's certain sections that desperately need sidewalks and streets, and I'm thinking of the Tomlin section and a few other areas. And so if I'm hearing you correctly, if we did some town hall or fireside chats and just promoted the benefits of what we're looking to do, that they're going to get hopefully new sidewalks and new streets, then the tenants can actually approve that.
Absolutely. That's right. Yeah, it's a typical registered voter, just like any other election in the city you'd be used to. Except it's the boundary, you know? You carve that boundary. Maybe citywide, it may be smaller.
Okay. And then we also have a small subdivision now that's looking for the city to form a lighting and landscape district. Currently, they have a homeowners association, but they'd like the city to take that over. I'm not on that subcommittee. I don't know where it is. I just kind of heard that at the water cooler in City Hall. But my, I guess my question to you, when that lighting and landscape district, if it goes through and it comes into the city, could we also attach streets and sidewalks, repaving dollar amount to it so that in a couple of years, if they need, we could bond against that?
Well, again, I mean, if you were talking about a CFD, forming a new CFD, you're going to require a vote, right? So if that's what you want to add on to the tax bill, that is going to be a new CFD, a new vote.
Well, could we do a CFD that would be all-inclusive of their landscaping and everything as opposed to lighting and landscape? Can we do the CFP and capture more services?
Absolutely. Yeah, that list of services we had up there earlier is a very broad list, and certainly that would be an option to kind of move away from landscape and lighting districts, you know, move away from that entirely for new projects. We're seeing that with a lot of our clients throughout the state because, again, you modernize your approach. You're not tied to the benefit analysis, the engineers report, the public hearing every year. It's really a one-time approval of that tax.
I like that. Also, on the, you know, one of the things that I always hear from constituencies is, you know, you're indebted on children into the future. And I'm of the opinion that if we're talking a police station that's going to give us 50 years, I don't have a problem bonding for 50 years because they're also going to get some use out of that. But when we're talking something that has a shelf life of 20 and we're looking to bond it for 40, you know, I think we really have to be careful when we do that because we may have to go in in the next 20 years and repave those streets again. And if we haven't paved the first set of bonds off, we're really going to be in a world of hurt. So, and then I understand when, like, we have a new developer coming in on the south side of town, and I could see that, you know, we would only need one vote for that CFD. And if it's an older development, then I guess it's just us doing some door knocking and saying, hey, this is what you can get, and going from there.
I think that's right, and that's why we see the CFDs more commonly in the new development areas. It's just a little bit harder to get that two-thirds voter approval in an established area, but it's certainly doable.
Yeah. Okay, let's bring it back to the other council members.
Could this be in lieu of the district that they're asking for undergrounding? And then it's kind of like you said, it's more inclusive, and then it could help fund the undergrounding that they were asking for anyway on that side of town? I don't know if I have a question or a comment, I guess.
Well, I guess the question, if I'm hearing you correctly, and not to put words in your mouth, but we, on the south side of town, we have an industrial area, and we're looking to do a, Kevin, what are we looking to do?
We were talking about an assessment district.
Assessment district, yeah. So is it possible that the CFD could replace the assessment district so that we can do undergrounding?
Yeah, it's very possible, and probably a better way to go you might want to consider. There is an undergrounding assessment district, you know, statute that is probably what you're thinking about. But again, you've got, you know, the benefit allocation that someone else is determining for you. And actually, there was a recent lawsuit down in Tiburon about the allocation of benefit. Some of the folks that were paying or going to be paying the assessment felt that the allocation was not, you know, fair. And that went to a court of appeals, and Tiburon had some issues with that that didn't turn out so well. And in a CFD, it's more flexible, and as you said, some fireside chats and that type of thing prevents some of that animosity. But bottom line, yes, that would be a substitute for that or an alternative, I should say.
Vice Mayor Turner, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth, but is that kind of...
You covered my question quite well. Could one be used in lieu of the other? And the answer that I'm hearing is that the CFD would afford more flexibility and less liability based on recent case precedents that you were citing there in Tiburon.
Correct, yeah. I personally...
And then to follow up on that, did we already start the procedures for an assessment district? And how would, if we were to impose this or to select this, how would it affect it?
Well, I think staff's going to have to digest this and maybe get back to us on that.
No, no, but I think this is a timing issue.
I just don't know if they've got that information available right now.
Mayor, council, I could certainly entertain Councilmember Cruz's question. In fact, that's why we're here tonight, is to introduce the community facility district as a tool for the council's consideration. We haven't had a discussion with the developers that we are, that are currently in discussion with the community development department in the south part of town about the formation of a CFD. But kind of a preview here is that we're seeing, based on some of the studies and analysis that we perform, on the services side, is that new development doesn't pay for itself. And this is a tool, unlike the landscape and lighting districts, that would enable the council to help recoup some of the costs of new development. The way I view it is CFDs are being used as a tool not only to, and one, the one component with financing infrastructure helps the developer finance that infrastructure through putting it onto assessments by the future either business enterprise or residents of that district. But on the services side, it enables the city to pay for those services that they're otherwise going to consume being new development. And I think it's really imperative that the council consider this, to put this in your toolbox, again, to help close that gap of the cost of the services that are otherwise going to be paid for by existing residents of this community. And so, you know, that, for me, that's kind of a key policy issue for council, is do you want development to pay the full burden of the service costs associated with that? I think, Mayor, you raised a question about the, we understand there's an existing developed area within the city that would like to supplant their existing HOA for landscape and lighting services within their community or, you know, neighborhood. This would be a tool that could be used to help pay, again, for those, those services would help pay. For example, if what they wanted was landscape services, we could, we could look at that as, you know, what the cost of that, what that assessment might be for, to form a CFD to pay basically the city's cost of providing that service to that neighborhood. So I see it as a great tool for us to consider.
Well, and I agree with you, but in addition, once we go out and we say, okay, it's going to cost you X amount of dollars a month times 12, or however we do it for the lighting and landscape portion, how do we capture the cost for the streets and the sidewalks 10 years from now?
So I think what we would want to do really upfront is to look at the full cost of the city services to, that are being provided to either that new development or that existing development, and that would be the basis for the assessment. You know, obviously, it involves some forecasting if we're looking at what are the future costs of road maintenance, sidewalk maintenance, landscaping, those services. But I think that's where we work with the team that's appointed by the city to, you know, identify what would be the appropriate assessment. And there's obviously a balancing act there. If you charge too high, you may be outside your constitutional authority, or, you know, it's going to be unacceptable by the voters. But to, you know, establish it and make sure that, you know, as a city, we're made whole and that we're covering our costs associated with providing the services that, you know, that the neighbors are demanding. So I do see it as, you know, on the services side, is an opportunity to maybe address those issues with those HOAs, which some of the fees they pay are pretty high.
Yeah.
And they may be very willing to support a CFD tax, you know, with some escalators, you know, into perpetuity or, you know, for a period of time in lieu of that HOA in, you know, what happens in council, then sits as the board for that CFD. What I think is also very beneficial about it is, you know, we're not doing that annual engineers report.
Exactly.
We're not subject to the appeals and, you know, a lot of the criticism that we receive with respect to the annual landscape and lighting process. But then again, we see on the financing of infrastructure, you know, often it's the developer that comes forward and says, I want a CFD because it's, it enables the future residents to pay for the cost of the infrastructure that they don't have to take out of their own, finance out of their own pocketbooks, basically. And if I'm correct, often the impact fees that are associated with the development can be financed in part through the CFD. So it could be a real benefit for the developer to consider a CFD. But you need to work out that issue of, if, you know, often the developer just has an agreement with the property owner, you know, who's going to vote on it and getting that support. So that could be a little tricky. But I guess the action we're requesting tonight is, you know, your direction on whether we should pursue this further. My recommendation is, you know, you empower staff to continue to evaluate this tool and, you know, seek where it might be a good fit in the city to establish, obviously, working with Jose and the Jones Hall team on actually establishing, you know, some areas where we might want to consider for a future CFD.
Okay. So council members, any more questions before we put it to a thumbs up, thumbs down?
I have one more, and this will be my last, kind of trying to use an example to just wrap my head around this question. But we get concerns at times about, and I'm going to go to L&Ls real quick, and the parks that are within L&Ls. We get feedback at times that the individuals who are utilizing a park that's paid for by an L&L don't necessarily reside within that L&L district. There's also rules that come down on the parks that are, I'm led to believe, created by the L&Ls when the parks were brought in. And it makes me wonder if we could use this as a tool to create funding to absolve some of those concerns about people who are utilizing the park that may not necessarily live in that L&L, and also to create an opportunity for more outdoor recreational activities because the city will assume a level of funding through the CFD. And Vintage Meadows comes to my mind the most, where we're helping fund the bathroom already because it's used publicly. There's a very big open field there that we don't necessarily move forward on often because it's managed by that L&L, and we don't have a lot of influence without getting their approval. And would this be a tool in order to divert resources into those areas to create more flexibility, to create more opportunities to where we take some of the financial burden off the L&L for the simple fact that people outside of it are also using that? And so, to me, it makes me wonder if that could be a practical tool for that, in which case I find myself very interested in looking at different ways we can move this forward.
Any answers to that question?
Well, I think the kind of statement and comment by Vice Mayor Turner is whether CFDs could supplant some of the existing, you know, landscape and lighting districts. And as we know, the issue, for example, with Vintage Meadows, is that their question comes up about the special benefit versus general benefit, and obviously, the park is used by other residents outside that particular landscape and lighting district. So there's a, there's a general benefit that isn't picked up by the residents within that landscape and lighting district. We'd have to explore whether we could put in place a CFD in lieu of that landscape and lighting district. Ultimately, in that case, it's a, you know, Prop 218, it's a voter issue. If we could get enough voters to support a CFD in lieu of that landscape and lighting district, I think we could definitely pursue, you know, making that change. But, you know, there's some technical legal issues we would have to work through, but I think what you're thinking about is definitely something that we could explore.
Yeah, because my final thoughts on that is we could entertain a, what was the term you used for where you set the boundary? Is it boundary? Okay. That we could set a boundary that we felt more appropriately captured who are using some of the services that we would want to fund by that, and that's just kind of my final thoughts.
Yeah, just one second, Jose. I kind of lost my train of thought. Sorry. Jose, please.
And I think you're definitely on something, council member. I think that that's kind of looking at it, and I think that's what staff wanted, just direction as far as, is this a tool that the council is interested in? We'd be working on, okay, well, what are the facilities? What are the services? What are the areas? Is it citywide? Is it specific areas? And then we would be kind of looking at, okay, this is a tool that the council is interested in, refine it a little, bring it back to see if that's something of interest. But something you bring up, parks, I have other jurisdictions, I mean, police services, recreation, et cetera, et cetera. The CFD is a great tool for a lot of that.
Well, I think the CFP, the CFD is great for a lot of things, but it does need the voter's approval. I think with the one project that we're looking at that wants to come in for our lighting and landscape district services, I think that would be a good test case of capturing them because they want something and we want something too, which is to increase that fee just a little bit to cover roads and sidewalks.
This thing about districts really concerns me because we don't have districts in the city right now, but we probably will down the road. That's for voting districts, okay? Now, if we have these CFDs, is that going to impact, is that going to impact any future voting delineations?
No, we're talking about kind of two different things. As far as voting, if the city went to districts for voting, that's captured completely different with demographer that would come in and would help with that.
Because the reason I present it like this is because not everybody, we don't have the same voter turnout in all areas of the city. And if it's going to be geographically designed, we really need to step up to make sure that there is voter participation.
Is the approval of it keyed off of the number of turnouts or the total voters?
It's the number of votes you receive back.
So it's the turnout?
Yeah, the turnout, correct.
It's got to be two-thirds.
Two-thirds of the votes received, correct.
So if you receive 20 and there's 100 houses in the area, it could still pass?
Correct.
Okay.
I've got one question, just for clarity for myself. So what I'm hearing is that if it's between one and 12, like, say, somebody in the South, there were 12 people that, with 12 different parcels, that wanted to do some type of a district, right? For infrastructure, for building infrastructure there, wouldn't have to go to the voters?
Well, it, again...
If it's their empty land.
Yeah, no registered voters within those parcels. The vote would be by landowners based on acreage.
Industrial land.
Correct, yeah.
And now what about if, but on the other hand, I kind of want to assure the public that everybody in town is not going to get hit with that. It's going to be specific to an area or event. Like, if they pass a two-thirds for Delaware, whatever, you know, the whole town is not going to pay that. It's just that.
Correct. Remember, when you form one of these districts, you are designating what the boundary of the district is?
Yeah.
So only the properties or, you know, voters within that boundary are affected. Anybody outside of the boundary is, doesn't vote and will not be taxed.
So you're kind of creating silos with restricted funding and expenses as well. They can only be spent right there in that community.
Well, actually, the improvements can be any city, you know, facilities or services. It's up to you whether you want to limit it when you create the district to facilities or services within that boundary area. But the law doesn't require you to limit it to that. That's an assessment concept that doesn't carry over to community facilities districts.
Yeah. Well, definitely, we need more education. Councilmember Bagby?
Well, you know, Mayor and I had the benefit of hearing Dave's presentation at the subcommittee meeting, so it's a little, I think, a little easier to digest it the second time. But I do believe, I remember you saying during the subcommittee meeting that CFDs have pretty much supplanted lighting and landscaping. And I've heard that from several places as well, that they're pretty much falling out of favor. They're not my favorite thing here either, so.
Yeah, that's correct. We form a lot of these districts, and we've formed dozens of CFDs in the last few years and virtually no L&Ls. It is, as we kept using the word "modernize," it's sort of the modern version that most cities are turning to.
Brings it along. So I guess what I would like to see is, I think that after further digestion, we could probably have all of our ideas and our favorite plans, but, and one of the things that is brought to mind is that we have several neighborhoods that are just don't, that are currently within city limits that don't meet our development standards. And so, you know, if we decided to do a citywide or if we decided to do, you know, area-wide, our neighborhood, the CFDs, I just think that we need to examine that at the staff level and really take a close look at it. And, you know, streets like Josephine and Antonio and, I won't name my street because, you know, everybody knows I don't have sidewalks. But then it would actually, I mean, it's appealing because it seems to me that it would then give the neighborhood a choice. Do you want to, you know, do you want new streets and do you want to pay for them? Because the fact is, is that the gas taxes are continuing to decline. We're a self-help county. We have a quarter cent sales tax, I hope that may or may not go to the ballot in November. And after the last primary election, where several, you know, the statewide... And after the last primary election, where several, you know, the statewide school bond went down for the first time in known history, several local measures didn't make it. It's, the voters are a little moody. And so, yeah, so, and even at a quarter cent sales tax for transportation in Sonoma County, it's the bare minimum. It really, you know, we really need to go to a half cent, but we're not confident that we'll be able to get it passed if there's any opposition. So, I think it's more important for cities, and especially for Cloverdale, to say, we are going to have to fund our own way. And so, what I would like to see from staff is really an inventory of those neighborhoods and areas that need to be brought up to modern standards, like not having power poles in the middle of the sidewalks, like having sidewalks, like, I don't know, having pavement where there used to be pavement, that sort of thing. And there are advantages and disadvantages, I think, to having a lot of different segments, and maybe just having one blanket. I'm not real, I think I just need more information, we all need more information. The other possibility is that we need a way to fund either rebuilding, redevelopment of a couple of, you know, civil buildings. And this is, finally, maybe makes it a reality that we will be able to get there on some of those facilities that we very badly need. So, I'm all for moving forward with this, and having it supplant lighting and landscape, man, that's just icing on the cake, I'll tell you right now. So, thanks for, I would like, thanks for the presentation, but I guess we'll see how everybody else feels about it, but I think what we need to move forward with this.
Councilmember Cruz?
Well, I'm very interested in this for being an incentive for new development, definitely. At the same time, I have the same concern as Councilmember Bagby regarding, is it gonna be a blanket tax? Is it gonna be by neighborhood? And can all neighborhoods afford the same amount? And then again, we don't want anybody to feel that, well, I'm paying more in this area, like, in, what's the name of that meadow?
Vintage Meadows.
Vintage Meadows. It's like, everybody uses that area.
It's beautiful.
Everybody. However, there is an L&L fee there. So, we just want to make sure that everybody is comfortable, that it is inviting for new development, and that it's perhaps a little bit easier on the yearly processes.
So, you're in favor of moving forward with more research?
Well, I'm in favor of studying it a little bit more.
Jason?
I am also in favor of moving forward.
Melanie, you said yes, Mary Ann? Okay, you know, I'm in favor of, let's explore it a little more. I think there's a lot of opportunities there for us to finally maybe get some things done. It's gonna be a sell either way to the community, you know, because we do need the votes. But, yeah. And David, what do you think about this being in a goal-setting topic when we have a goal setting on March 18th?
I think you'll find that it will fit perfectly within some of the draft goals that council will be presenting to you, I mean, your staff will be presenting to you.
Good, thank you. Okay, I'm not gonna delay it anymore unless there's nothing else. Thank you very much, Bill, Jerry, James, and David. And, yeah, look forward to working more in the future. Okay.
Our pleasure, pleased to be here.
Thank you. Item number 14, adoption of debt management policy, and this is Susie's, but David, I guess it's gonna be yours?
Absolutely. So, the item before you tonight is really a reflection of the action that council took earlier to approve a resolution for the refunding of the 2015 successor agency bonds. One of the requirements that became effective on January 1st, 2017, is to submit our debt management policy to the California Debt and Investment Advisory Commission. And so, what we're asking tonight is that the council adopt a resolution approving the debt management policy that was included in your packet. I don't think there's anything unusual. It's a pretty standard policy relative to debt management. I think it's beneficial to have a debt management policy on the books, and staff is recommending that council adopt the resolution that would approve those, the debt management policy.
Counsel, I'll bring it up for questions.
None for me, thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, let me just open that to the public real quick. Anybody wanting to address this topic? So, that's one of six votes. So, there's a couple of resolutions, I believe one's on page, oh, both of them are actually on page 317.
I'll offer the resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale, Cloverdale Community Development Successor Agency Resolution Number To Be Determined 2020 and S.A. To Be Determined 2020, a joint resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale and the Cloverdale Community Development Successor Agency approving the adoption of a debt management policy.
I'll second.
Could we have a roll call, Eileen?
Yes. Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye, thank you, Eileen. Next item, item number 15, is a budget amendment.
Thanks again, guys.
Oh, thank you. And professional services agreement with engineering consultant Mo Engineering, Inc. And this is, I guess it's yours, Mark, as Eric's not here.
Well, this item here is a professional services agreement with Mo Engineering to basically establish a GIS system for the city of Cloverdale. So, basically, we're going out and surveying, survey quality, surveying our water system, our sewer system, and our stormwater system. And that's gonna be the basis that's fundamental for doing anything else in terms of, you know, infrastructure management, any sort of software that's out there that we can manage it better. It's all, you know, based on geo-references. So, that's, this is a fundamental step to get us away from mapbooks and into, you know, something a little bit more technologically-based, cloud-based systems.
Twenty-first century.
And so, this is the first step of many steps to come as we perfect our GIS system. Are there any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions?
I have one. It looks like about 20,000 is allocated from the general fund. Can you confirm that?
That's correct, and that's because right now, the stormwater system, you know, is, it has, it's not an enterprise fund currently, so it kind of has to tap into the general fund to make this happen.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, anything else? Okay, public, nothing? There's a resolution, I believe, on page 324.
Yeah, there is.
I'll offer a resolution by title only. City of Cloverdale City Council, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale, authorizing a budget amendment in the amount of $46,966 for the City of Cloverdale GIS, GPS, utility mapping project, appropriating funds for the project, approving and increases the expenditure in the Water Fund Department 600-40-801-42135. Other professional services by $7,914. Sewer Fund Department 630-40-801-42135. Other professional services by $19,052. Storm Drain Department 210-40-403-42150. And miscellaneous contract services by $20,000, and further authorizes the city manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city with Mo Engineering, Inc., in a form approved by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Turner?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Next item is, I guess this is also yours, Mark. It's a warning of the Cloverdale Safe Roots, the School Phase II Project Team Gelati.
That's correct. This is the sidewalk extension in the south portion of the city, South Cloverdale Boulevard. As you know, we've been trying to hack away at extending sidewalks along the South Cloverdale Boulevard. And this basically establishes a sidewalk in front of the Church of Latter Day Saints, and also extends the sidewalk in the southerly direction, just south of the Cal Fire Station. So, you know, we're closing the gap there. We still have a little bit more to go, but finally, after, I don't know how many years this took to get through the whole process with Caltrans input and things like that, that we're able to come to construction now. So, this, before you, is to award that construction to Team Gelati, they were the low bidder for this project.
Councilmembers, questions?
I do.
Go.
Mark, have we heard anything at all from the county about sidewalks over on the other side, or any improvements over on the other side?
It's been about two years since I've asked the county to go ahead and, you know, at least get it surveyed to see...
Do something.
Do something, exactly. Unfortunately, the surveyor is part of permit sonoma, is not part of the public works. It's a little bit more challenging to get surveyors, county surveyors, up here to do that, because they really don't report to the right agency, in my opinion.
Gotcha. I was just being hopeful.
Any questions? Mark, just share with us a little bit, I can envision where Cal Fire is, their sidewalks ends, and they have that big wooden Smokey the Bear. Are we saying down further?
Yeah, there, it's not much further there. We were talking about a few, you know, a few 20, 25 feet, extending, you know, a few flags southward. The challenge there is that once you go a little bit further south at that location, you run into that little hillside, so the project becomes more expensive. We're looking at probably some land acquisition and retaining walls put in there to extend the sidewalk. And then again, in front of the Adventist Church, we never really got any permission from them to go ahead and acquire some land to go ahead and get the sidewalk through there as well.
Now, is that the church that's directly behind CBS, or is it the other one with the trees?
It's the other one with the trees.
Okay, so, we have permission to take those trees now?
We do not, not the Adventist. We didn't get anywhere with the Adventist Church. The only church that gave us permission was Latter Day Saints or the Mormon Church.
Okay, so, the sidewalk's gonna go in front of...
The Mormon Church.
The Mormon Church, okay. Maybe where that, at the end of Smokey the Bear sidewalk there, if we could just maybe clean that up a little bit and put a stripe, kind of like we did on the, coming off the Second Street Bridge?
You're talking about the fog line there, is it faded out? The white line along the lane traveling? I'll take a look at that, sure.
Yeah, just to make sure it really sticks out and people can walk in.
Yeah, 'cause people still walk in the shoulder, unfortunately, at that location.
All right, so, what do we have here?
Mayor, council, just a couple of quick comments on this item. As the city engineer mentioned, you know, this has been a project that's been in the works for a number of years, I think at least five years. And so, I'm glad that we're finally able to bring this forward and make our way through the federal funding process. The, you know, during that time, the feds and Caltrans, you know, reduced the amount of funding for the project down from what they were originally approving it to the $100,000. So, the remainder of the project is being made up, and I wanted to point this out, by Measure M funds. And Measure M funds are those funds that make up that quarter cent sales tax component that all of our residents in Cloverdale and Sonoma County, you know, pays as part of their sales tax. And so, you know, we're really gonna be making good use of the Measure M funds in terms of putting it to important pedestrian improvements along our boulevard. So, just wanted to note that for our community, that we are putting their sales tax dollars to work to improve and make our community more accessible. That was my only comment.
Thank you.
And obviously, awarding the bid will enable us to actually move forward with the project.
Good, thank you, David. So, there's a resolution on page 347.
I'll move the item.
Second?
I second.
Eileen, can we have a roll call?
Of course. Vice Mayor Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Walter?
Aye. Okay, next is subcommittee items. Update on the Joint City School Subcommittee recommending and proposed skate park?
Okay, Mayor, councilmembers, what you're seeing on the agenda tonight is the direction that was provided by council to kind of populate the agenda for the subcommittees to reflect, you know, some of the items that you'll see on future agendas, or provide updates on key items that were recent, on recent agendas. The update on the Joint City School Subcommittee recommendation on the proposed skate park is, was a result of deliberation between our two representatives on the, on the subcommittee, which included Mayor Walter and Vice Mayor Turner, and then the school board representatives. The recommendation that flowed from that discussion was to basically eliminate the skate park from its current proposed location. And we will, based on the direction of the subcommittee, bring that forward for ratification by the council. There was no specific deliberation as to, or recommendation as to where the proposed location for a future skate park may be considered, but that to really discontinue further planning at its current proposed location.
Can I ask why?
Yeah, so...
Just curious.
No, I understand. When we sat down and really, and one of the things that I mentioned when we got into this item was, I wasn't overly interested in the rocky road that got us to that day. I was more interested in what it is they needed from us to move forward. The school district has been able to obtain Measure H funds and get an approved design to move forward on their gymnasium. And us not being willing to negotiate over the location of the skate park really prevented a foreseeable avenue from any members of the negotiating party, so to speak. Deb Howell from Alexander Valley Healthcare was there as well. And it really prevented any reasonable way forward to get Washington Street pushed through to Healdsburg Avenue, working with some of the easements that were involved there. And with the school board having the funding secured, having the design approved, we found that it was a more, in my opinion, a more favorable way forward to bring the two design teams together and entertain the idea of not having the skate park be there, and what did that create for them? It limited a lot of the invasive construction that they would have to do with an access road that the fire department was asking them to put in, that they were not willing to wiggle on. They had tried to appeal where the fire access road was because they already had one on the other side of the property, and the fire department still came back and said, "We are telling you, you need to put it in here." And the more and more that I tried to just say, "Well, no, I want the skate park to go here," I had less and less of a valid argument to compete with things that they've already moved forward. So, to me, it looked like an avenue forward to repair some of the relationship with the school board and to allow them to move forward on a cafagymatorium for the middle school without requiring a lot more invasive construction. And I do believe that we'll be able to find another location that would better suit the parties involved without having a fence be right along their border, without even the natural barrier of a street which can be seen in other jurisdictions where a skate park is near the school. So, I realize it's probably not the most favorable decision, but I did feel it was our best pathway forward. And while that's not my decision to make, that was ultimately why we wanted to bring that recommendation back to the council, because it is our decision as a majority to make.
When have we ever found, has the school board brought up actual drawing, a proposal that we can actually look at, that is public information?
Can I just jump in on this? I know that there are members up here with conflicts regarding that area, so it's okay to just provide that update, but as far as discussions go, that would be agendized so folks can recuse themselves who need to recuse themselves. So, just a conflict issue.
No.
It was just, I think it's just more of an update, but it'll be coming back for discussion.
No, I'm just curious, if I can, if I can see it, if one exists, that's all. Do we know? Does anything exist?
Councilmember, staff would be happy to make that inquiry with the school board, or the superintendent.
So we don't have any drawings or anything from them at all?
What I think we were, provided the opportunity to review very briefly at the Joint City School Subcommittee, was an exhibit that reflected a road being proposed to the skate park location. That was the extent of the information that, at least that I've been provided. And I was not allowed to have a copy of it, so, or provided a copy, but it does exist, and we could certainly ask.
Yeah. In that drawing was all the things that we were, that I've been worried about for a while, like the drainage.
Why don't we do this? Councilmember...
Brigham.
I'm sorry. Brigham, Councilmember Brigham. It's past my bedtime, folks. Councilmember Brigham, maybe you could hook up with the city manager tomorrow, and he could give you a more detailed briefing.
Sure.
David, is that, is that safe to say? And then we're not, and then we're not getting Jose all upset.
It's uncomfortable.
Okay. So, and let's just point out that Councilmember Cruz is on that school-city Subcommittee, and she did recuse herself from that meeting, so, just for the records. Okay, so Subcommittee Reports. As you can see, we have a couple bullet points. I mean, thank you for doing that. You selected some. So as you, if you want to comment on any of those bullet points, you're welcome to do it. And councilmembers, if you have questions of bullet points on another Subcommittee, now's the time to discuss them. So the first is Finance and Police.
Any questions?
No questions?
No, no comments.
Okay. Planning and Sustainability. Marian, I think that's you?
No, you're the chair on that.
Okay.
I would like to...
Yes?
Get an update on Six Acres. Not necessarily now, but should I meet with you, Kevin, on that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think we'd direct his staff to come back with, and council to come back with a memo, so that would probably be a good update. But, yeah, feel free to call them. Public Works. The next meeting is March the 24th, and who's the chair on that one?
I am.
Okay. So you got a couple bullet points if you want to explore any of those.
Well, actually, didn't we vote on the Corporation Yard today?
Voted on the what?
Yeah, it was on the consent calendar.
Yeah, it was on the consent calendar, the Corporation Yard.
Okay.
Prefab building.
Prefab building.
All right. City Fire District Subcommittee?
Nothing.
Who's the chair on that?
Me.
Jason?
Yes, there are no current items. We will meet on June the 8th, 2020, 5:30.
All right. School-City Subcommittee?
Yeah, for this, I chaired this particular meeting. We did an MOU for a school resource officer, which we're continuing to move forward on. And I think the deliverable we asked of staff was to have something a little more tangible to review at the next, not necessarily the special meeting that we have created, but in possibly April or May, and then we're going to bring something back to the council. I believe it involves partnership with the fact that a stop sign could be going in and things of that nature. Feel free to add any details that you might want, David, but there is more to come on the MOU for a resource officer.
In that committee, we did talk about having a stop sign. And Chief Ferguson said that that was possible, and it was going to be ordered?
Yeah, we just got to wait for it to be put in.
Okay.
But the fact that there, although I might be, I might be combining too, David, because I'm realizing now the school resource officer is not necessarily the crossing guard which I had in my mind, so.
No.
No.
Yeah. No, I would like to know what is the MOU agreement on that, and what is going to be the expense on that, and who's going to shape that?
That's going to, the draft MOU is in the process of being reviewed by our attorney's office, the attorney, based on comments that were provided by the school district. And what the Subcommittee will preview is exactly that, is a draft agreement, which will provide, you know, the, you know, proposed financing mechanism for paying for a portion of the school resource officer, also what the responsibilities are in terms of the police department providing that service to the school district, and a lot of the details. So that's exactly what we plan to do with the MOU, is discuss all those details. I think that you'd be interested in reviewing, Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you.
One other item worth mentioning relative to the Joint City School District is there's been a request by the Subcommittee members to move to monthly meetings. So we'll be making that change as part of the updated schedule on time, would be to move that, move that committee from bimonthly meetings to... There's just significant interest amongst the chair and the Subcommittee members of meeting more regularly.
And we also changed the Finance Police Subcommittee Day as well.
Right.
And that'll become a backup as part of that resolution.
That's correct. We need to bring back an updated resolution for the council's consideration so that we wouldn't have to schedule every meeting as a special meeting.
Okay. So that's it for Subcommittee Reports, but I...
No, we didn't review homelessness.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Homelessness, Community Advisory Group, that's myself, and I believe Councilmember Brigham.
We didn't meet.
We, no, we did not meet.
We were supposed to meet last night, but we went, there was all the rest of that stuff. So we don't have another meeting until the 7th.
The 7th.
I just, I had a question.
Yes.
For the Subcommittee, and I, forgive me, I haven't had a chance to really review the notes from those meetings, but since it's something that we discussed at the District Four Regional Homeless Meetings, I just, and, you know, with events over the weekend, I just was wondering what plans the Subcommittee was making to educate the public about the role of the city, the role of the county, and how COC works, and how we're going to communicate, you know, the challenges or the roadblocks that we have locally, you know, what solutions are out there and working, what results are we getting, and then how are we planning on reporting out?
That's, that's, that's a lot.
Exactly what we're doing.
And I'm not too sure that we've got the answers for all of that.
We don't.
I just want to make sure that that's part of the...
But I can tell you, I think, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, and Councilmember Brigham, we have pretty much passed the point of, we don't want a shelter, we don't want any services in Cloverdale. You know, those folks, I think, understand that that's not an option, it's going to happen. And a perfect example of what happened on Tuesday, thanks to David's efforts, we explained to the county supervisors what we were doing here in Cloverdale, and they decided to drop the Cloverdale location, as far as we know at this point. But where I'm going with this is, we need to do something, or they're going to do something.
That was made really apparent.
Yeah.
And there was, they were never going to pick Cloverdale.
No.
It was never on the series.
That was never even on the table.
I understand, but nevertheless, that's, people have to understand that if we don't do something, either the state's going to do it, or the county's going to do it.
Goren made that really clear.
Yeah, so, so, you know, there will be something coming down the road, I'm this sure. I don't know whether it's going to be this year, next year, or how it's going to be, but we're going to address that at our committee, so.
And Mayor, just, because I want to share with council, I think there's kind of a larger issue, I think, Councilmember Bagby's raising, and that is around the governance structure relative to the continuum of care that is the federal structure that oversees homeless funding from the federal government. And there's a lot of discussion countywide about how that government structure should be structured. And I think we also heard during the meeting with the Board of Supervisors that there's, at least, they conveyed an interest in really looking at collaborative approach and making sure that the cities are represented, either on the Leadership Council or a Governance Board that oversees the funding allocation for homelessness. And so I think that's something that's going to be working its way through the Mayor and Council Members Association in particular. But it has a lot of impact on this discussion about homelessness, so that, you know, we have a role to play in terms of, you know, being represented at the table when it comes to these important funding sources that are coming, being funneled through the county as the entitlement jurisdiction. So there's a lot more to come on that, and I think we'll have probably more discussions that really need to come to council, rather than maybe the Homeless Advisory Committee on some of the, on some of the details.
Thank you, thank you, David. Are there any other questions on the Subcommittee? Okay, I just have a couple things while we're talking about the homeless situation. Chelsea Julian posted on her Facebook a YouTube video to watch, which I did, and it's called Seattle Is Dying. And there's also another one that I watched that's called Tale of Three Cities, which is the situations that's happening in Seattle, San Francisco, in LA. And I have to tell you, they're really eye-opening. The one in LA was really shocking to me in the sense that there's now fifty-three square blocks of Skid Row, and it's a Petri dish for disease.
Of course.
I mean, the stuff that's coming out of there is just absolutely awful. And both of these videos, in all three cities, they've recognized the fact that it's not just a homeless problem, that's the minor one. The real problem is substance abuse and mental illness and getting those people treated properly. And so they're real good watching. I suggest you do it, very educational. There's a program in Rhode Island where, well, you'll just see that, Seattle Is Dying, at the end, they have a program that they're trying to emulate in Seattle that's been very successful. Couple other reminders, let me see, we have a publics record request by Angela Cordova, so if we could make sure we get all that information to our city clerk. The governance manual is due to David by March the 19th with your suggestions for updates. And I've asked Irene to provide us, within the next week or so, with David's permission, just an update on training that council members are missing, like, for example, the sexual harassment or the ethics training. So she'll be providing us with that. And on March the 18th, there is a budget workshop, so make sure that's on your calendar. And lastly, Kevin, did we receive a letter from Tom Sink yet?
We did not.
Okay, once again, call.
I have questions.
Yes?
I'm, I may not be here for the budget, and I would like to know, how can I participate of this, even if I'm not here? Do I just submit my priorities? Do I get some information from you? Or what is the process if there's somebody who's going to be on an excuse absence?
Mayor, if I can?
Yes.
Okay. So there's a couple of opportunities to participate, either directly or indirectly, in the workshop. Again, the workshop isn't necessarily a budget workshop, per se, it's more goal-setting, but it's a discussion about work planning and how those tie to goals. So there, I mean, obviously, that comes in the context of planning for the budget, but I want to just emphasize that it's really about goal-setting. And with that said, I think, to respond to Councilmember Cruz's question, if you're interested in participating directly, we can work together with the city clerk to agendize your participation wherever your location is, if you'd like us to do that. And we can, you know, bring you in remotely so you can participate. There's a process to do that and ensure compliance with the Brown Act. I think, you know, it's not something we necessarily want to set up as a process, you know, where council members just aren't attending meetings, but I think it's an opportunity to use technology so that you can be patched in and be part of the meeting when the meeting is occurring. And I think that provides, you know, you the opportunity, and other council members, should they be absent in the future, to participate in the meeting discussions. And of course, alternatively, you're always welcome to meet with myself and key staff to kind of go over, you know, the presentation that staff's going to provide and have input on that process, you know, because what we're going to be seeking is council's input on the kind of work plan, goal-setting process, to help inform ultimately the budget workshop that will come back with, to, into the council, so.
Well, David, the 18th is fast approaching, so when do you plan on having that repot out?
So the agenda's going to go out tomorrow. The agenda is just, you know, just that, it's an agenda. What we will be providing, you know, next week is the PowerPoint presentation.
So how will, how will, how will Councilmember Cruz be able to see that in advance of the meeting, or won't she?
I can certainly, as soon as it's prepared, you know, send a copy, and I would do so to all the council members.
Right, and then she could write back to you, correspondents, what...
Absolutely. And again, or participate directly in the meeting. But we have to work, we have to work, make sure we identify the location and the place.
Right.
So that could be, that could be posted.
Yeah.
The city clerk has procedures.
I'm doing that with Zero Waste Sonoma, because they need a unanimous vote.
Right.
So it would have to be posted at the location on Friday. So for...
It's actually a special meeting, so it's 22 hours.
They said, on Friday. But I'm hoping that everything gets canceled and I'm here.
So that brings me, so that brings me, this email that I sent to David earlier, I keep getting copied as if I'm Martha's alternate, and that's why I, and I, have we established that it's actually Jason who's the alternate for Zero Waste?
That is correct. The, did confirm the resolution that was adopted by council, to designate Vice Mayor Turner as the alternate on the Zero Waste Sonoma Board of Directors.
Yeah.
And I shared that with Leslie Luke Ash this afternoon. But I understand that there's, there might be some interest in relooking at that committee or board appointment, so...
And I bring it up because it is the morning of our budget, of our Wednesday meeting. And now I've just learned that Councilmember Brigham is not going to be there, so if, and I had, I had planned to go in Martha's place, thinking I was the alternate, because I keep getting copied on the agendas from Zero Waste. So...
And this is a unique opportunity where I would have been able to go, because I already had the day off.
Because you already had the day off, yeah.
For this.
So it is an issue, I mean, so I guess the question is, is that do we, if we, do we want, do you want to just hold with you dialing into that meeting and covering that vote? Because that's a, that's a vital vote. That's for the composting site. So as long as we, that's why I wanted to bring it up now, as long as we know Martha's going to be available to call in either way, even if you're, whether you're here for the budget meeting or not, that's a, that's an important vote that we don't want to leave them hanging on.
Because the goal-setting and budget starts at 11:00, is it?
The goal-setting workshop is scheduled to start, start at 9:00.
Yeah, it starts at, it starts at 9:00. And so, yeah, we went, and they started 8:00?
Eight thirty.
They started 8:30.
But if I were to, I could go and do the vote and then come...
Yeah.
To the, to the budget.
That's what I was planning on doing, if it indeed turned out to be me.
So you're going to go vote and then be back on the 8:00?
Yes.
Okay.
If I'm here.
Yeah. That makes sense.
You know, speaking of Zero Waste, I noticed on your activity report, I'm sorry, I noticed on the activity report that on Monday, the 9th, you had a conversation, and it was voting on issues, where the telephone call is, right?
Let me see. I don't have it in front of me, my computer.
I was just wondering.
And you have another vote to give, I guess, on the compound, on the composting?
I think it's the compost site.
Yeah. We used to, the representatives from the different committees used to come to the city council and get direction on how to vote. Don't we, we don't do that anymore?
No. Well, this is, these are issues that we are studying and following up in every meeting. And it would be quite comfortable for our council to have to read those packages regarding, but...
Marian, do you remember, do you remember that at all?
How did you do it, Mary?
I don't know what you're talking about.
In the past, when we were on like, the, on the trash committees, or we used to come back to the full city council and say, "These are the issues that we're going to be voting on on the next meeting, and how do we vote on..."
How do you want me to vote?
Yeah. Did we, did we used to do that, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we all need to know how our representative is voting.
This is something that's gone through the RFP process and has been thoroughly vetted. I mean, I wouldn't, I...
I'm not saying not to do it, I was just a little confused that we were voting on something and the council doesn't know what we're voting.
But we need to ask Melanie, who was the last representative for the last few years.
Well, we don't have to vote on it, right?
No. Well, okay. Sorry.
But they're still a pending question, I'm sorry. And it has to do with the alternate, because, with alternate. And I discussed this with Jason, because those meetings are four hours. And, for example, we're having a special meeting, it's going to be a whole day. And I just wonder if he's going to have the vacation time available to be able to go to these meetings.
Well, that's up to Jason to decide.
Well, and if... I'm not going to stubbornly hang on to an appointment. I do have a full-time job, I don't hide that. And so if you are interested in being the alternate and have the capacity in which to participate, I'm very open-minded to that.
Well, what I, what I think I expressed to the city manager is that this isn't showing, this is not a showing up and like looking at a bill and deciding whether Cloverdale's going to support it on a legislative platform. It's, you can't do a half an hour's worth of reading and go to this meeting. And what I discussed with the city manager is that this is something that you needed to have sat on the board for a long time before you were really up to speed, or you're a city manager or somebody in city government who has been dealing with, you know, these very complex contracts, these, the complex legislation, the requirements, the players in the area. It's, I guess, it's hard, it's hard to just jump in as a new council member unless you're going to take that board on and you're going to just, and just do it. And so what I, my recommendation to the city manager was, it's like, well, you know, either a former board member does it who has the history and can get up to speed quickly, or the city manager is the alternate. And to be truthful, this board is so technical, I mean, three of the cities send their staff to this board. They don't, it's not, they don't even, like, they don't even show up.
Well, I mean, I'm not egregious to that, do you want to...
Yeah, so I mean, and so, and all, because of your schedule, I think it's just, it's asking a lot of you to say, oh, yeah, you're going to have to keep up with all of those issues and then not know when you have to show up and, you know, make an informed vote. So that's, that was my concern. Not that you can't do it, it's that it's a capacity question.
No, no problem, no offense taken.
Are you saying, Councilmember Bagby, that you're okay being the alternate?
I'm willing to be the alternate, and my, I don't need it, I got plenty on my plate, but I think it should be somebody who can step in a little bit more readily, who's just up to speed on the issues. It's just, it would be, it would be, it's a lot to ask a new council member to be an alternate on that board.
Well, then, can I, can I ask David that you hook up with Councilmember Bagby and kind of determine if...
We can Rochambeau for it, David.
If a staff person's going and bring that back on the resolution.
Happy to do that. I think if I'm accurate, that the staff members that sit on those committees tend to be the city engineer, public works director.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll definitely have that. It sounds, it sounds like you got to volunteer.
Mark can go. Yeah, exactly.
We're watching this, that's another one.
There you go. Yeah, that's another one that's hard to just step into because it's, it's so, the issues are so convoluted. Yeah.
Okay, well, then I think we solved that. We're going to be surprised at the next meeting when the resolution comes back, changing times and dates of meetings and the representatives as well. So Mary Ann, back to you, you're going to be missing the March 18th?
I am.
Goal-setting, okay.
Well, I told you guys that a long time ago, that that was the week I was going to be out of town.
Okay. So you'll just jot any notes and send them to David once you get the slide presentation?
Sure, I will, but I'm sure you guys will do a good job.
Thank you.
Oh, you haven't gotten to the future agenda yet.
Okay. All right, so I think that's it for council reports, legislative reports. Seeing none, city manager, city attorney reports?
Mayor, I just want to make a quick report that late this afternoon evening, the county Department of Public Health, the health officer, has issued an advisory canceling all large indoor events, particularly focused on individuals that maybe have health impacts or who are older than 60 years of age. And this is because of the potential impacts of the coronavirus. So this advisory is just that, it's an advisory, it's not enforceable, but it's intended to protect the public health. And I anticipate that we'll, we'll see a series of these and may even see, you know, more mandatory actions that are being requested by, by your health officer in the county, which is the lead agency with respect to the coronavirus.
Well, due to that ruling, I had to cancel the Cesar Chavez Day of Service that is scheduled for, that was scheduled for March 29th, so now it's postponed on an open date because we don't know what the situation is going to be health-wise in the county.
Yeah, I also canceled my, my flights to New Mexico in April where we were going to be going on vacation. Well, that, plus last night, my mother-in-law had another heart attack, so we were in the hospital with her most of the night. But, long story short, she's, she's fine, so. Thank you, David. Any other reports, David, city attorney, Jose, anything?
Just to, just to kind of tear off what David was saying, legally as well, for the city attorneys, we're all, I know my firm is, we're having even a meeting on Friday, kind of going through the different laws that, you know, the coronavirus and effects and jurisdictions, given our labor forces, our folks, on how we deal with it, on, it's really affecting everything. You know, declaring emergencies, as you know, there's jurisdictions that have been declaring emergencies, and we've been working with them, how far do you go? It's really, I mean, it's really hitting all aspects of local government as well.
Yeah. Future agenda items?
I have one when it's my turn. I just said I have one when it's my turn, so please.
Well, there's just a couple of things I wanted to bring up, and one is, did a letter ever get sent to Jim Wood about 85?
Councilmember, staff has not drafted a letter, was on the finance admin and police subcommittee. We had a, I think, over, almost a four-hour meeting, but it appeared that there is a proposed legislative fix in the works, and so...
Well, that's proposed, but that's, that may not go anywhere, and it may not affect the arts organizations, which is what I'm interested in, the nonprofit and the arts organizations that are really taking it in the head right now. This is just, it's destroying a lot of programs.
You know, I had the opportunity to represent the city because Councilmember Bagby couldn't, and we met with Senator Dobbs, and he said that they are in the works of doing, they understand what happened, and they're redoing it, and it will be out this year.
Maybe, we'll see.
Well, he said it would be, so...
The other thing that I wanted to talk about, I still would like a letter sent, signed by the mayor, possible, just so that they know that we're interested. Wouldn't it be possible, every other board or anything that I've sat on, we always have a Google Calendar on my desktop, there's it for the CPAC, for whatever one I want to click on to find out when my meetings are where. And that's the one thing we've never done in the city, and I mean, it would give me a lot of help to know, well, okay, if I need to call Marta, because I want, well, okay, Marta's gone on vacation for the next two weeks, or she's at a meeting here or there, whatever. But I don't understand why we couldn't maybe do that.
Well, I publish my calendar and I share it with David and Kevin, and so, you know, on Outlook.
Yeah, we should have the tools existing.
We have the tools, it's just that we just don't use them.
Yes, and now it's just about practice, right? Because the technology we have through the Outlook subscription.
And that's fine, but we just need some way of getting it to everybody.
Yeah.
So everybody knows what everybody else is doing, kind of, because this is kind of like...
So that would admittedly limit the planning commission who don't utilize our city email at this time, but that's just me thinking off the top of my head, but I think what you're proposing is very doable.
Well, even Outlook, like I said, Google Calendar is just as easy. I mean, it's very simple to run, it's, but it just gives every single date so that if you guys say, well, we're going to put a special meeting up, and it's going to be December the 10th, we've already got that up there. I can look on December and see, okay, that's good for me, or that's not.
Jose said it's okay.
Councilmember Cruz, what?
No, I just asked Jose, because that was a concern I was sharing with Mary Ann, too, and he said it's okay for us to look at.
Yeah.
For you to look at each other's calendars, I mean, there's not a discussion, I mean, if you're putting notes on your calendars, I don't agree with this, and then somebody else is putting notes, okay, maybe that wouldn't be okay if it's just appointments.
I wouldn't even say that, just mainly that's coming out of City Hall.
City Hall, exactly.
That's just City Hall stating this, this is, because people call me all the time and they'll say, when is this meeting specifically? And I have to go back in my paperwork or wherever I'm looking and find it. But if there was a simple Google Calendar, I could just punch it, and I'd say, no, that meeting is Wednesday.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure if we have one on our website now, do we, David, do you know?
We do not have a master calendar available on our website. I mean, the subcommittee meetings are known because they're set, as well as council meetings, but, but we don't track council members, I mean, if you let us know where you're going to be gone, we track that, but we don't have a master calendar, so that's something we could certainly look at and figure out what's the best tool to identify your respective calendars, meetings, and...
Well, it doesn't have to be overly complicated, it's just a pretty simple thing.
Yeah, well, you know, we have calendar, we have a calendar now on our iPads that's connected to the city cloud.
We, as Vice Mayor Turner indicated, we subscribe to Office 365, and it does provide, if you do calendar sharing, for you to view each other's calendars, but not everybody uses, you know, that platform.
Okay, well, I guess where I'm going with that, could staff start utilizing it and post the meetings up there? And then if Mary Ann wants to see if we have any meetings for March the 18th week, you know, she can just go up on the calendar and look. I don't care where she is, but she cares where the meetings are going to be.
Correct.
Does that make sense?
The city clerk might have a solution.
I do have one, I do have, and... Goes away from the potential notes that City Manager Kelly, he sends out the weekly, his weekly updates. What we could do, or at least attempt to do, is provide a monthly calendar in this calendar, so if he sends out the weekly next week, then it could have, you know, the rest of March or possibly April, and then it lists not only events on, you know, when they're happening, the times, but also if we're aware of who's, you know, on vacation or away from the office, and we can add to it, and of course, if council has suggestions. And that way, it's just a one-pager of the monthly calendar.
Mainly for me, it's for, I'd already made reservations before I even knew about the 18th. So, I mean, that's the way it goes. But if we had one that went all the way up to December, and as the dates come in, it's there, just to poke at. Like, ours is booked all the way, like, with CPAC, it's all the way for a year ahead, the events that are happening, what's going on. So I can plan very carefully with that.
Councilmember Bagby?
Yeah, well, if I could basically make a suggestion, you know, this really comes under the heading of one of our stated goals, which is to improve operations and efficiencies in City Hall. And so, I'm very, fairly confident that we have the tools to accomplish this within Office 365, so I would like to add this to the agenda of the Police, Finance, and Administration Subcommittee Meeting so that we can find the best technical solution going forward.
Thank you, that's a good idea. Okay.
Yep.
All right, anything else?
I have one.
I have one.
Go right ahead.
It's another item to add to Police, Finance, and Administration, if everyone is in agreement. I would also like to address some of the emergency communications. Over the weekend, it seemed to be pretty evident that one of the things that we're lacking is a public information officer and a capacity to respond to communication issues in a timely manner. It's unfortunately probably a preview of things that might come as far as other emergencies that we're preparing for. It probably needs to be included in some of our resilience strategies, so I'd like the subcommittee to take a look at our relationship with the chamber, their use of the logo, and what's appropriate, what isn't appropriate, as far as communicating with the public on social media, what they do with communicating with their members in private email, they're a membership organization, I think that that's, I don't, that's not something I want to get into, but when they use a logo on social media that they share with the city, I think that we need to make sure that it's factual and helpful information to the public and doesn't further disseminate misinformation that is running rampant on social media. So it's something that I think would be best addressed, at least initially, in that subcommittee.
Okay, let's get that on the subcommittee.
Ditto, ditto.
We're not going to discuss it here, thank you.
No, no, just ditto.
Veto?
Ditto.
Oh, yeah.
I had a veto, that was the first one.
So we'll discuss that. I know Councilmember Bagby and the city manager and I did discuss it a little bit already, so. Anything else for future agenda items?
I'd like to hear a report, challenges that you're facing, anything like that. We approved money for you to be able to spend on a retreat in order to build the platform to do our city manager review. We had initially hoped that this would be accomplished before we did this year's goal-setting. I'm very empathetic to the fact that there were a lot of unforeseen circumstances that city staff had to lasso with. I'd like to hear back what your challenges are, if you need more money, or if it's just been a time issue and we maybe need to help reset priorities to make this happen.
Ditto.
Okay. Ditto by Councilmember Cruz. Okay. David, would you like to add anything, or?
I think, we hear the council, that there's a number of items that we'd like to hear back on, and we'll be ready to address those items.
Anything else? Irene, I'm sorry I can't see you tonight, but next, next council meeting, I'm going to work on that, so...
I believe she's still there.
Well, thank, thank you, everyone, for staying. Chief, have a safe ride home, and we'll see everybody soon.
Irene, can I help you get anything across the street?